Hello, welcome to the City of Boynton Beach City Commission meeting today, Tuesday, February 2nd, 2021 at 4:45 PM. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Stephen B. Grant.
Present.
Vice Mayor Ty Pennsirga.
Present.
Commissioner Justin Katz. Commissioner Justin Katz.
Here.
Commissioner Woodrow L. Hay. Commissioner Christina L. Ramalas. Commissioner Ramalas.
She's not signed in yet. She will be attending the regular meeting.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, you have a quorum.
In accordance with Section 286.01 Florida statutes, the City Commission will hold a closed-door session today. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. The case is Brandon Bressia Plainta versus City of Boynton Beach. It's a Palm Beach County Circuit Court case. In attendance in the closed-door session will be myself, Jim Sheriff, City Attorney, Assistant City Attorney Gal Batash, who's here in the chambers with us, the City Manager, a court reporter, the mayor, and the members of the City Commission. We'll be approximately 45 minutes, but we'll time it such that we will be back here in commission chambers by 5:30.
Thank you. The city will recess until then. We're good, and so we will all rise for invocation led by Minister Christie Ward from Missionary Baptist Church, and then followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Yep. Just make sure the green light is on.
Let us bow our heads. Father God, we thank you, oh God, for this day of this opportunity to be before your presence once more. Father God, as we come in this place, oh God, in the name of Jesus, we ask, oh God, that you touch everyone from the crown of their heads to the very soles of their feet. Bless our mayor, our vice mayor, the commissioners, those, Father God, who are in place over our city, oh God. We pray for every community, oh God, in the name of Jesus, even our officers, oh God. We pray, oh God, in the name of Jesus, that this meeting be done decently and in order. Father God, you said in your word, "In business, lest be men," Father God. So we pray, oh God, everything that shall come forth, let it be done decently and in order. We pray, oh God, that they make the right decisions concerning your people and this community, oh God. And God, we ask that you keep their minds, their families, and each and every one of them in their respectable places. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. John, would you please provide us with the introduction?
Yes, Mayor Grant. Hello and welcome. My name is John McNally, and I will assist the mayor and the elected officials with the go-to webinar portion of today's meeting. Before we start, I'd like to review a few housekeeping items so the virtual audience members know how to participate. Your microphones have been muted to reduce background noise during this public meeting. There will be specific times during this meeting when audience members can participate. The first way is by typing your question into the questions section at the bottom of the go-to webinar interface. Those items will be read into the record by a meeting organizer at the appropriate time. The second way is by clicking on the raise hand icon indicating that you wish to speak. A meeting organizer will announce the next speaker at the appropriate time and unmute their audio, at which time you should state your name and address for the record. You should minimize any sources of background noise and speak clearly into your microphone during your allotted time. I will now turn control over to Mayor Stephen Grant, who will be presiding over today's meeting.
Thank you, John. We will now have an agenda approval. Any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to offer an addition.
Yes.
As you may have heard from Governor DeSantis' most recent press briefing, he's mentioned that he's willing to continue working with churches and, in partnership with them, create points of distribution pods. I'd like for the commission to consider if we would be willing to create a joint letter to be sent to the governor, to the emergency manager, Jared Moskowitz, if we could create a pod site in partnership with Christ Fellowship, for example. I found out that they have a similar operation up in Port St. Lucie, and I figured it's worth a try.
The issue that I have is that I'm sure there's multiple religious organizations that would like to help out. And so, you know, I know that Christ Fellowship has helped us out with Feeding South Florida. You know, I would also like to make sure that we have one east of 95 as well.
Absolutely.
So that, you know, and then we'll take, you know, how do you want to take applications of this, you know, or, you know?
Mayor, I wish the governor had made it clear how these things were chosen. It's unclear how they're chosen, and so I figured we should give it a shot. And I just, I chose Christ Fellowship not just because of our previous history with them, but also because they currently have a pod site up in Port St. Lucie. So I figure we may have a good chance with them, but I understand what you're saying. I wish I could tell you more information as to how these things were selected.
All right, so let's have a discussion about this for city managers, and we'll put that as the fourth item.
Thank you.
Mayor, I am here.
All right. And thank you. So right now, Commissioner Katz, we're in additions, deletions, corrections. We have an addition of discussing of a pod site, points of distribution in regards to the city working with a religious nonprofit organization. And so, if I need, if there's no further additions, deletions, or corrections, may I have a motion to approve as amended?
I'm up.
So.
Seeing no further comments, all those in favor, state so by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to informational items by members of the City Commission. Commissioner Katz, would you like to begin?
Nothing to disclose at this time.
All right. I do not believe Commissioner Hay is with us just yet, so Commissioner Ramalas?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. No disclosures. Just want to wish everybody a happy Black History Month.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I have no disclosures as well. Thank you.
All right. For myself, on January 20th, I watched the inauguration, and it was interesting to see that, you know, it wasn't the fanfare that we've had for past presidents in my lifetime, but I was glad to see that there were no incidents in this country on that day. On the 21st, I attended the Palm Beach County Transportation Planning Agency's meeting. I was able to speak with the FDOC Director for District 4, and I think for future items, I would like to discuss certain resolutions to hopefully get to work better with the state when it comes to our state roads within our city. On the 28th, I attended biking in West Palm Beach where I was working with Upcycle to tour their city and to see what can be done to make sure that pedestrian and bicyclists are encouraged to use those modes of transportation. And it was definitely apparent, the equity disparity that you had in certain neighborhoods. Yesterday, on the 1st, I attended the Downtown Business Coalition for a Better Brighton Boynton Beach. I want to thank all of the businesses that donated a gift card to Congress Middle School for their reading program that will be going on tomorrow. And that is all the disclosures for myself. And seeing no further disclosures, we will move on to announcements, community, and special events and presentations. Our first is to proclaim February 11th to the 17th, 2021, as 211 Awareness Week. City of Boynton Beach proclamation, whereas 211 Helpline is proud to announce it is celebrating 50 years of service to our community. And whereas over this span of time, 211 Helpline has responded to over 3 million requests for help from people of all walks of life, providing the guidance and support they've needed. 211 continues to do so throughout the course of the current pandemic. And whereas requests for help more than doubled at periods in response to COVID-19 last year, caring staff continue to be the beacon of hope, providing crisis support when people are overwhelmed and do not know where to turn. 211 is available any time of day or night. And whereas 211 also has specialized advocacy and support groups that include the Special Needs Helpline, Help Me Grow: Catching Children's Development Delays Early, Elder Crisis Outreach. And whereas 211's Life Saving Sunshine Daily Telephone Reassurance Call continues to brighten the lives of local isolated seniors and has expanded to include isolated caregivers. And whereas 211's My Florida Veterans provides peer-to-peer support and helps veterans to readjust, providing linkages to services for veterans and their families. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, hereby proclaim February 11th to 17th, 2021, as 211 Awareness Week. In the City of Boynton Beach, and urge all citizens to be aware that if they are overwhelmed and in crisis or just need to talk, 211 is available any time of day or night. 211 staff can also provide referrals for mental health counseling, substance abuse, healthcare, employment, food assistance, daycare, support groups, volunteering, VITA, free income tax preparation, and so much more. Do we have someone from the audience accepting the proclamation? Nope. Do we have anyone online? John, can you open up, see if someone has their hand raised?
Just a second.
All right. So I don't know if anyone would like to accept the proclamation. All right. Our next proclamation is recognizing February is Black History Month. Whereas Black History Month affords an annual opportunity to become more knowledgeable about African-American heritage and to honor the many black leaders who have contributed to the progress of our nation. And whereas such knowledge can strengthen the insight of all of our citizens regarding the issues of human rights, the great strides that have been made in the crusade to eliminate the barriers of equality for minority groups, and the continuing struggle against racial discrimination and inequity. And whereas we recognize and claim the work of Lamar D. Jackson Jr., a former quarterback at Boynton Beach Community High School, who has risen to the ranks of starting quarterback for the Baltimore Ravens. His determination to improve his education skills has shown with numerous awards and accolades, including the youngest player to win the Heisman Trophy and elected unanimously as the NFL's 2019 Most Valuable Player. Whereas Mr. Jackson's apparel company, Era 8, supports the African Wild Dog through education and funding by maintaining and protecting the species from poaching and poisoning. Whereas we journey toward a more united nation, let us use this commemoration of Black History Month to serve as a reminder of the needs for meaningful dialogue and shared commitment to actions that uplift and empower all. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to recognize the month of February 2021 as African-American History Month. And I urge residents to join together in this period of re-education to the principles of justice and equality for all people. And witness whereof, I have here and to set my hands. And is there anyone who would like to accept this proclamation? Okay.
Mayor, Eleanor has a few remarks. Once you complete that, if you would like for her to chat about the Black History Month.
Okay. Anyone? So Eleanor, you have a few words?
Certainly. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Eleanor Crissell, Marketing Director. The City of Boynton Beach will be celebrating Black History Month with the following activities and promotions. On February 12th at 11:00 AM, our archivist will discuss resources available to the community for researching the Black History of Boynton Beach. She will spotlight oral histories, archive resources, and a Black History Month timeline will be shown. She will also be available for any questions at that time. That will be live on Facebook. February 17th and 21st at 1:00 PM, youth services librarians will guide children and teens through Black History books available in our youth library collections. Videos of that tour will be posted on social media outlets for future viewing as well. On February 26th at 11:30, Dr. Anderson, Professor of Psychology at Palm Beach State College, will present a program on the importance of therapists and counselors in processing trauma and caring for your brain in the context of Black history and struggle. The library recommends the following online sources to explore further Black history: African-American history sites in Palm Beaches, Black Freedom Struggle in the United States, and National Archive African-American Research. And don't forget to sign up on the canopy with your library card to watch a variety of free and educational Black History Month-related films. On February 1st, the city's main Facebook banner-related post was changed to reflect the beginning of Black History Month. And we will be highlighting five longstanding Black-owned businesses in Boynton Beach on the Facebook page. And we will also be giving history of our recreation facilities named after prominent Black residents and activists, such as Tommy Williams, Zal Hester, Carolyn Sams, John Denson, and Deacon Wilton, will be highlighted on the Recreation's Facebook page. And we encourage you, a couple of years ago, Warren Adams, or got his title, Lori, right off the top of my head, but he created a separate, go ahead. He created a separate website for us, and I just want to remind everybody to visit it because it's very nautical. And he spent years compiling and also got a grant, I think it's up on the screen right now, that shows the history, Black history in Boynton Beach, both orally and verbally and with pictures. So with that, I conclude my announcement, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Eleanor. And, you know, for me, I originally stated that this was African-American History Month, mainly because, you know, I feel that people of African heritage have definitely added value to our community. You know, the reason why I chose to point out of Lamar Jackson is that we make history every day, and so what we do today is our own history, and that we want to make sure what we are doing is the best that we can have. And, you know, I understand the city's using the Black History, but for me being colorblind, it's kind of like it is an ambiguous term. And so I am just so happy that we are recognizing everyone who identifies with this month to make sure that we are continually educating, educating our youth and all of our population of the contribution of people of African heritage in our community. Would any of the commissioners like to make any statements or comments?
Mayor, I'll just chime in that I am appreciative to staff for making these efforts of, maybe I might have missed it, but of my nearly five years sitting on this commission, I think this is the first time that we're doing something like this, especially highlighting Black businesses, highlighting Black pioneers in the city of Boynton Beach during Black History Month. So this is really great, and I hope that this sets a precedent for us to do this moving forward every single Black History Month. Thank you.
Yeah. Can you hear me? Just not.
Yes, we can.
Okay. I'd just like to say that I detoured the remarks that were made by Commissioner Ramalas, but I would like to say I don't want us to miss the point of the Black History Month. And it is in terms of, you know, if you look at it from a broad standpoint, we all have been cheated to some extent. And that is in the fact that we were not told the complete history of the contributions made by different cultures. So I want to make sure that we realize that what we're doing now is highlighting what should have been highlighted years ago. I mean, I could tell you stories of involved myself, but I won't for the sake of time. But I think it's a matter of correcting a wrong that was done. And we are all grown up and broad-minded enough in 2021 to receive that now where we may not have been in the 1960s. So I just want us to make sure I understand the point that you're making, Mayor, in terms of all cultures, and I agree with that 110%. But in this particular case, February has been selected out to recognize those contributions that were made by the African-American culture to this society, and we can make those corrections as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no more comments, I do believe that Patrice from 211 is able to speak regarding that.
Yes. Can you hear me?
We can.
Hi.
And your organization?
Hi, I'm Patrice Schroeder, Community Relations Specialist for 211 Helpline. And I'm sorry I didn't, the little hand tab, I wasn't quick enough to jump on that, so. But I want to thank you, Mayor Grant, and the Council of Boynton Beach for your continued support and your help in our mission. We are grateful to be there for everybody in the community that is just in need of that comfort and support and that crisis support as well. We are averaging upwards to 300 calls per day at certain periods, and we know that there are three waves to this pandemic. We basically had the first initial wave of the COVID pandemic. Then we had the economic wave of the COVID pandemic, and now we are in the much larger mental health wave of this pandemic. And 211 will continue to be there for anybody in need. We really want to emphasize that suicide prevention piece. But we also want to emphasize the resource piece. We're there, you know, to help people connect to those feeding sites. If they're looking for the food assistance, if they're looking for medical care, if they're looking for employment, helping them connect to Career Source, just the gamut. We know there are so many in need right now, and also if they just need to talk. So we are there for those isolated caregivers. We are there for those seniors that are alone and would like to have a conversation. We also have our Sunshine Program where we could call seniors every day and caregivers to check in on them and their well-being and to let them know that somebody cares. So we just have a wealth of programming, and I won't take up any more of your time. But I'm hoping that the next half-century is much easier on us all. I know that we've all been struggling as a community. And again, we are stronger together, and I'm just grateful to be a part of 211. I've been with the agency. I'm in my 15th year. So, and I hope to continue on. But again, just thank you so much.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd just like to ask a follow-up question. If she could repeat those three waves that she mentioned, that was the first time I've ever kind of heard it categorized like that, I'd like to hear that again.
Yes. This is from the CDC, the Center for Disease Control and Prevention. Basically, looking at the fact that the initial hit and outbreak in the pandemic created that medical situation, people that were concerned about COVID and getting COVID and impacted by COVID. Then we had the economic crisis that followed as we had to close down, obviously, to protect the people that were at risk. But now, due to all these things, we have that very huge mental health wave. So we know that there are a lot of people that are just suffering in silence with depression, maybe untreated mental health, just anxiety, panic, fear, all these things that have contributed to that mental health wave that we are in now. So I just hope that people know that 211, they can simply dial 211. They can text to TXT211898211, their zip code. They can also chat online going to 211palmbeach.org. So we're there. They can also do online resource searches on our website as well. So we will continue to be there 24/7 for those people in need. We do have a language service if somebody needs to have another language. And we do have some bilingual staff, so we have multilingual capabilities. And they're just hoping to just really help those individuals that are just struggling right now.
Thank you. And one more question. Have you seen a jump from?
There's a lot of feedback. I did not hear. There's still feedback. They may have their phone next to their speaker or something.
My apologies. That was me.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to ask, have you seen a significant rise in terms of phone calls? You said sometimes upwards of 300 per day. Have you seen a significant rise in calls being made to you pre-COVID, prior to, or compared to now?
Well, comparing 2019 to 2020, we actually had over 13,000 additional calls and contacts. So we have seen an increase, definitely. And also, you know, now we're getting the seniors that are just struggling to get, you know, registered for vaccination. So, and we can't, we cannot do the emails for them. So unfortunately, it's a tough thing that's happening right now, but a lot of seniors are calling us with frustration and just fear and, you know, everybody wants to go back to normal. I don't know if there will be any normal, but a new normal. But at any rate, you know, we're in the trenches. We're in the front line, our staff.
Understood. If I could, Mayor, if we could perhaps make an agenda amendment where we could add this to our next commission meeting, I would like to donate $1,000 of my community support funds to 211 to support them in their efforts, as I know that they're doing very crucial work, and I'd like to support that.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We're always grateful for that.
Right. So I believe we can put that under administrative. If you would still like to reconsider the agenda, or would you want it at the next meeting?
I'm fine either way. If we could put it under tonight's commission meeting, since we're already here. I'm fine with making a motion to amend the agenda to add donating $1,000 of my community support funds to 211.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
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 Right. Any opposed?
Again, thank you all so much. Again, thank you.
Thank you. And our last announcement is by Casey Young. And Casey, it says you're self-muted.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Commissioners. Casey Young, Recreation and Parks Director. I'm here tonight to announce the Immortal Four Chaplains Memorial Ceremony hosted by the Boynton Beach Veterans Council. Ceremony will be held at Tom Kaiser USN Boynton Beach Veterans Memorial Park on Wednesday, February 3rd, starting at 12:00 noon. All CDC guidelines will be followed, and attendees are encouraged to wear face coverings. Join us tomorrow as we honor the memory of these brave veterans. Thank you. Any questions?
No.
Mayor, if I could, I would also like to make another announcement about our Magic Wheels and Special Deals event that's coming up.
Yes.
I would like to announce the Joe DiMaggio Children's Health Specialty Center Magic Deals and Special Deals Event scheduled at Bury Free Park. Wheels and Special Deals Event scheduled at Bearer Free Park. The event will start at Bearer Free Park on February 13th, starting at 10:00 a.m. The event will include food, music, vendors, and help the Recreation and Parks Department celebrate two-year-old Zoe as she receives her magic wheels. This event is a great opportunity to join us as we support inclusion while supporting local businesses. For more information on this event, visit boynton-beach.org/magic.
Thank you. And do we have something going on this Saturday at Ezel Hester? Is the Space Hound still going on?
Oh, yes, this weekend we do. We have the Sky Hounds Event, which is a dog competition event for where we can come in and watch dogs run and catch frisbees to score points and to advance to other competitions.
This is a professional competition?
It is an organization-sponsored competition, not necessarily professional. It's open to any dog of any abilities.
All right. And then my next question is, are spectators allowed to bring their dogs?
Spectators will be allowed to bring their dogs. Just won't be allowed on the competition field.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
And so, we got a lot of things going on, very excited. Is there anything else for announcements, community and social events and presentations? Seeing none, moving on to public audience. Individual speakers will be limited to three-minute presentations. Please state your name and address for the record before you begin. In addition, if you would like to speak online, please raise your hand or ask a question.
Good evening, Jackie Materigus, 2620 Northeast First Court, Boynton Beach Village Royal on Green. And good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here to see and present our checks for the Police Department and the Fire Department. It's $1,000 checks for the police and fire, and we're very, very grateful for their service, as always. And I would also like to thank our Commissioner District 2, Hay, for keeping me apprised to what was going on at the meetings, and me being able to present to our residents what was going on here in Boynton Beach, which is extremely important to them and all of us, and thank you very much.
Our pleasure. So.
You're welcome.
All right. So I guess I'll take that.
Okay.
Good evening, my name is Naomi Cobb, and I live at 1007 Southeast 3rd Street. I am a new resident to City of Boynton Beach, and I am grateful to have found a beautiful home, a 1948 home, in that area. It saddens me that I have to come here tonight, but I do. I thank the Commission and the Mayor for allowing me this time. I come because there is an adjoining property that is owned by McNano Tree Landscaping, that I have worked with the Code Enforcement on, and what I am here tonight is to ask. Although I have talked to my Commissioner, Commissioner Romulus, I have asked for some, a public records request about the meetings that happened with our neighbors prior to this being approved in a residential neighborhood. We bought our home in July, my wife and I. In mid-August, we have an invasion of rats. We are now upwards of almost $4,000 trying to get rid of them. So we are wanting to sell our home and move out. There is nothing that we can do. I have called, I have asked McNano about the bees, they got that under control with the city's help. They work on the property at 5:30, 6 o'clock in the morning. Code Enforcement has told me I should call the Police Department, I have. I've been a public employee for 46 years, I retired in 2015, and I'm presently working for Palm Beach County's Office of Equal Opportunity. We're not permitted to disobey the law. I don't know why McNano is permitted to do so. I know that they've been fined. But the continual disregard for any of us in our residential neighborhood is harmful to me, and it allows for me to not want to be in the City of Boynton Beach. I don't blame the city, I don't blame the Commission. What I do expect, though, is a better response. I have now reported them to the State of Florida, to the Environmental Protection and to the Health Department. The rats that are on that property is shameful. I've read through the documents, they're supposed to have a rodent control, vermin control, they're not supposed to start before 8:00 in the morning, they're supposed to be done by 6:00. There's just a variety of things. The Code Enforcement Officer that I've worked with is extremely kind, very helpful, but I appreciate you all, if you could help us as homeowners appreciate our property and not depreciate it by the vermins that are on our property. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. And so you made the public records request through our online system?
Yes, sir, and I've received it, and I've gone through it, and that's why I know what some of their guidelines are, and you all were very stringent about it. And I know parts of it is with code compliance, parts with the Fire Department. When we first moved there, there was smoke just every day coming up off the property and the smell. I don't mind living in an industrial neighborhood, is that, we think it's kind of cool, actually. But we all have a responsibility, businesses as well as me. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner Romulus.
If I may, I would just like to request that staff, I have a conversation with staff sometime this week regarding this, this has been a topic of conversation that has come up in the past. We thought we resolved it, clearly we haven't, so there's still some steps, further steps that need to be taken in order to assure the quality of life of the residents that live in this area. This is, you know, just clearly, just a terrible situation, and it doesn't seem to be working out. It's always difficult when you allow for residential community to abut a commercial area, and this is one of those circumstances where it's just causing problems over time that really just haven't been resolved. So I'd like to have staff reach out to me and also in communication with the speaker and see what steps we can take to try to mitigate this situation and help improve it.
And yeah, I agree with you, it's a tough situation when you're living next to commercial or industrial. You know, my old place used to be by a dumpster of KFC, and so there were plenty of cats, and so that's why, one of the reasons why I have a cat. So I understand what you're saying, but they do have requirements, and hopefully you have a smartphone, and if you take those videos, we have what's called My Civic app, that you can upload it there, and so that way the city will have the evidence that you're stating of, rather than trying to parlay it through the phone. If you can take a video and upload it, or pictures and upload it, then we will have that evidence. Yes.
Interesting conversation you've just had with me, because I have video. I told Code Enforcement I have video. They told me they can't accept my video. They gave me no other alternative other than to call the police when I hear them out there. So I did not know that their app was available. I will make use of that, and if you could, if some staff person could let the Code Enforcement staff know that that's a possibility, that would have been helpful to me. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. And I want to make sure from staff that I did get the correct, it's called the My Civic App Through Boynton Beach. All right. I do believe we have some online comments. Jonathan May? You are unmuted, if you'd like to.
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. My name is Dr. Jonathan May, and I live at 2303 Southwest 21st Terrace in Boynton Beach. And I wanted to speak tonight specifically, first to share how excited I am that you all are doing such great recognition for Black History Month and for racial justice and equality in our city, and that's part of my campaign. I'm actually announcing tonight that I'm running for, to be the Commissioner for District 1 in the City of Boynton Beach, and I would love to join you all in this great work if elected. And in thinking about what Commissioner Hay had talked about, about how we're all being re-taught, we're all relearning, I think that is such a powerful and exciting viewpoint to think about. And most recently, I learned through my work, I'm a multicultural educator, I'm the former Chair of Multicultural Affairs at Nova Southeastern University, and I've done multicultural education for 20 years. But most recently, I was learning about the wonderful accolades that the Black Lives Matter movement and founders are receiving, they actually have been nominated for the Nobel Peace Prize Award, and for the incredible social movement that transformed our nation this summer. And so I'm wondering, I wanted to put out there for consideration, if we might consider bringing, you know, similar symbols of support for that movement to Boynton Beach. I know Washington DC recently renamed Pennsylvania Avenue, Black Lives Matter Avenue, and I think that it would be such a powerful statement during Black History Month to consider naming one of our streets, or one of our buildings, or something to show our solidarity with supporting black lives in all aspects of civic life. So again, I just want to say thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak, and I look forward to meeting more and more of you as my campaign continues here in the City of Boynton Beach, and how we might work together in the future to support all diverse groups that are in our city. And thank you so much for this time, and please, again, be safe, everyone.
Thank you, Dr. May. You know, for me, it's, I don't know if the city owns the street or if it's a county, but it's Old Dixie Highway. You know, Dixie Highway and Old Dixie Highway have two different meanings, and so that's something that I think is, would be subject to change. In addition, the city lost a lot of the named streets a long time ago when the post office said it's easier this way to give, have, you know, four different, northeast, northwest, southeast, southwest. So this is something that I would suggest if you know of a street that you would like to rename, that is owned by the city, that that is the best way to move forward, so, And next, we have Jake Hoffman.
Yeah, hi, can you guys hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. My name is Jake Hoffman, I'm a small business owner at the address of 306 East Ocean Avenue, number 108 in Boynton Beach, Florida. I had a conversation with the SBA today regarding some of the money that is going to come through to the City of Boynton Beach with the CARES Act. During the first round originally, I wasn't eligible to apply for my small business because I was outside of the CRA district for you guys, and by just a few blocks, not able to apply for that funding. And so this time around, on the second round, part of the conversation I was having with the SBA is if the City of Boynton Beach is considering at all expanding the funding from not just the CRA district, but the entirety of the City of Boynton Beach that are able to apply for that funding for small businesses, and if that's something you guys have taken up or considered yet.
What did you say your address was again?
306 East Ocean Avenue, Boynton Beach, or 33435.
That is in the CRA district.
Yes, we're, I think, again, like, I think it's about a block outside of it, we weren't eligible this first time.
And so you're asking if the city is going to reissue their loans if they receive money from the federal government?
No, what I'm saying is that the people outside of the CRA aren't able to apply to that pot of money within the City of Boynton Beach unless they are within the CRA. And I was wondering if you guys were going to be able to consider allowing people outside of the CRA to apply, because we are still Boynton Beach citizens and, you know, Boynton Beach small business owners, but we can't apply to that pot of money, we're subject to going to the county.
Yeah, I don't, I think all the city's fundings has been distributed, so that's kind of where I don't think the city has any more funding to distribute.
From what I understand, there's going to be a second pool coming in, you know, after the, after the rest of it passes through, you know, the national level, that there's going to be a second round of the, you know, economic stimulus for the City of Boynton Beach.
Okay. So when that happens, please let us know, and we'll make sure that you're capable. And so are you a commercial location, or is this a residential location?
It's a residential location, I have an entirely remote business.
Okay. So we'll definitely keep you in mind, and so just, does the city have an email address that he could send information to, to get an update if the city gets any money?
Mayor, he can send it, he can send it to me, or, well, you probably don't want to, I say, give me your number, Jay, or let me give you my number, our number in the office here, and give me a call tomorrow, because I think there's a few different programs that are out there that we may be able to help you with. But the one we did fund last year, that was a one-time funding, but it wasn't, it was not funded via CARES Act money, so 742-6010, that's the City Manager's Office, and my name is Lori.
Okay.
Give us a call tomorrow, because either myself or David Scott will be able to help you out on that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Annette Gray. You're self-muted, you ready?
Good evening, yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Annette Gray with GBDC Entrepreneurship Institute. We are at 1500 Gateway Boulevard, Suite 220. I just quickly wanted to let the Commission and staff know that my nonprofit, along with a few other small nonprofits, are in the process of planning a Love Your Homeless Valentine's Day event. We plan to do haircuts, a mobile shower, laundry, and a pallet of clothing from which they can pick clothes that will fit them, and a food truck to provide meals as well. The tentative date is February the 13th, and we're finalizing all of those details as we speak. So I will send more information over to the Marketing Department and to the City Manager's Office, but I did want to put that on the radar. We are working with quite a few organizations in Boynton Beach, Delray Beach, Lake Worth, and West Palm Beach to make this event happen. I also just wanted to quickly piggyback on the caller before, he had that a little bit backwards. He's in the CRA district, and he cannot access the CBDG dollars, because initially, when the CBDG grant was funded, the CRA also had funds, and there was a stipulation put in place that didn't allow businesses to access both funds. So you actually do have quite a few CRA district businesses currently who did not get monies from the CRA but cannot access the CBDG dollars. who did not get monies from the CRA but cannot access the CBDG dollars. And we would really appreciate taking a second look at that so that we can help. When I say we, I mean myself as a consultant with the SBA and the SBDC to help some of these other businesses get access to those funds. So just wanted to help clarify that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Will do.
Mayor?
Yes.
Is that something we can add as an agenda item at the next meeting to revisit and see if we can possibly fix that? I guess whatever confusion there might have been. I believe at the time when we did this, it was because we were trying to make sure people didn't double dip. But at this point, it's been over a year and I think, you know, we did run out quickly out of those funds. And if there is an opportunity that allows for business owners to be able to receive funding and not have to, I guess, I guess not, you know, bypass any of that, maybe we can revisit that conversation.
Thank you. Next, I have Catherine Uden.
Hello, are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Catherine Uden. I'm the South Florida Campaign Organizer for Oceana, which is an international organization protecting the world's oceans through policy change. And I want to thank you for bringing forth the discussion about a polystyrene ordinance. An estimated 17.6 billion pounds of plastic leaks into our oceans from land-based sources every year, equivalent to dumping a garbage truck full of plastic into the ocean every minute. Plastic has been found in every part of the food chain, including the seafood we eat. According to the Ocean Conservancy, the top 10 items most commonly found during beach cleanups are all single-use plastics. Endangered and threatened marine mammals and sea turtles are swallowing and becoming entangled in plastic, including right off the shores of Boynton Beach. Only 9% of the plastic waste ever produced has been recycled and only about 2% of plastic packaging is effectively recycled into something of equal or higher value. Plastic is a major source of greenhouse gas emissions, producing nearly twice as much as the aviation sector. If plastic was a country, it would be the planet's fifth largest emitter of greenhouse gases. I know that Boynton Beach recently put a reduction of plastic in their climate action plan. Thank you so much for that. As of 2015, companies were producing 400 million tons of plastic annually and that is expected to quadruple by 2050 due to an abundance of cheap natural gas from fracking. The US is responsible for some of the highest plastic inputs to the ocean in the world, ranking third. And the US generates more plastic waste than any other country in the world. We are number one. Polystyrene foam is not only bad for our oceans but bad for human health. It's an environmental justice issue as petrochemical companies pollute marginalized communities such as the corridor along the Mississippi River known as Cancer Alley. Plastic pollution clogs storm drains and creates unsightly litter. And by reducing single-use plastics, Boynton Beach is protecting the environment, Florida's coastal economy, and the livelihoods of its residents, excuse me. While we work on state and federal action, we encourage the city of Boynton Beach to pass legislation to reduce single-use plastics and polystyrene foam. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And next, we have Tom Warnke. Tom, it says that you're self-muted.
Good evening. This is Tom Warnke, 2780 Worcester Road. And I have comments on two subjects and one is the Boynton Beach Eco Park. The other is the polystyrene regulation. And I wonder whether I should pull my comments for the polystyrene item when it's later on the agenda.
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll wait on that one. But I wanted to commend the Commissioners, the city of Boynton Beach, for moving forward on the Eco Park up off of Quantum Boulevard. 35 years ago, when my father was on the Boynton Beach Commission, the industrial park there, Quantum Park, they created a set aside for preserve and made that a requirement. And now that you're making public access available to the Quantum Park Eco Adventure Park, if you will, on Quantum Boulevard, I just wanted to give you a thumbs up and say thank you very, very much. My wife and I were out there last week. And although there's a lot of access points along the southern edge near the parking area that should be blocked off so the ATVs and motorcycles don't get in there, we walked back in a little ways and you can hear the pine trees, you can see the animals. It's just a beautiful, beautiful park. And I attended the workshop last week and Mr. Colin Groff did an excellent job moderating the visioning workshop. And it looks like it may be prioritized as a passive park. That would be great. So thank you for working on this for the citizens of Boynton Beach.
Thank you, Tom. And so if no one online has further questions or would like to raise their hand, we'll move on to administrative. Now we will appoint eligible members of the community to serve in vacant positions on city advisory boards. And I don't have the agenda in front of me. Can you pull that up online? John?
I don't have the ability to do that from here. Alan, are you able to pull that up at your, on your device?
Mayor?
We'll get that up.
Yes.
I could run the appointment list down to you if you'd like.
Who's speaking?
I'm sorry, this is Deputy City Clerk Tammy.
Hi, Tammy.
Hi.
So do we have anyone? Can you tell us if someone's applied for any of the positions?
For the firefighter pension board, we have Robert Taylor, who is requesting to be reappointed, Desiree Walter, who's also being requesting to be reappointed, and then Christopher Simons, who is a new applicant for the fire pension board.
Okay. And then the next question is, is who has the nominations?
Mayor, I have one.
Okay.
I would like to nominate Mr. Simmons.
Have a second?
Second.
Second.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Christopher Simmons appointed to the firefighters' pension board.
Mayor, there were also, we had an error on the agenda. We had two applications received for the Planning and Development Board. Initially, when looking at them, we thought they weren't, they didn't make it on time to be published and they were, they were not published and that I believe may have been an error. So we would like to bring those to you the next meeting and you would have consideration. You do have two applicants for that advisory board.
And we have the possibility of future more applicants as well?
Yes, if it gets extended one more meeting, sure that deadline goes with the meeting published date.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
Before we move forward, I just want to alert you to the fact I have the document open. There is another position open for nomination. Commissioner Hay has it?
Yes.
I just didn't want us to skip over that.
Okay, read it.
Is that P and D Vice Mayor?
Yeah, it's the firefighters' pension. There's two.
Firefighters.
Yes, Robert Taylor, who is currently on the board, and Desiree, I'm sorry, Watler, that is currently on the board.
There's a Desiree?
Yeah.
That's that, I move to reappoint Desiree.
Second.
Seeing no further comments, all those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. All right. And I believe we have one alternate position available for the Art and Advisory Board, two regulars and two alternates available, the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeal, two positions available for the Employee Pension Board, one regular and one alternate on the Historic Resource Preservation Board, and one available for the Planning and Development Board. Next, we have approved the request of Mayor Grant to distribute $200 of his community support funds to the POW MIE OREE Corporation.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. This group, they went, they normally go on the National Cemetery off of 441, but I believe they may be doing it this year in Boynton Beach. They state the name, they have a big group and state the name of everybody who is buried at the National Cemetery to make sure that they are not forgotten for their sacrifice to this country. I don't know if we have someone from their organization that could like to speak. They could raise their hand. All right, Tammy, is that you typing away?
Yes, I'm sorry.
No worries. And seeing no comments, we'll move on to Commissioner Romulus's request to distribute $1,000 of her community support funds to the 211 Corporation.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have first and second. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously.
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you for adding that item. As, as our, one of our previous speakers, Ms. Annette Gray, was mentioning that there is an event happening for Valentine's Day. I don't think we would have time to come back around for a second commission meeting. Would it be all right to also add a second distribution of my funds to the organization for that event that they're doing for the homeless individuals on Valentine's Day?
I would be happy to take a motion for reconsideration of the agenda to allow for that happen. I just want to make sure you have enough funds to do that.
I believe I do. I don't think I've spent anything this, this for this fiscal year, yeah.
All right, so do you want to make it the the motion for all your remaining funds for this fiscal year?
No, I would make it for 500.
Okay.
Yeah. And so.
So.
Motion to reconsider.
So we have the the motion to reconsider the agenda item and then we'll need the motion to vote on the agenda item. So Commissioner Ramos, your first motion was to reconsider. We have a second by Commissioner Hay. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Now we'll need a motion to approve the $500 to the GBDC Incorporated Nonprofit.
Sound move.
All move.
We got Commissioner Ramos as a first and Commissioner Hay as a second. Seeing no further comments, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no more further items for administrative, moving on to consent agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right, seeing no further comments, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Consent bids and purchases over 100,000. I don't want to pull this item, but I did discuss with our Assistant City Manager Colin Groff, item 7B. And I think this is one of the reasons why we want to start generating electricity through our water utility with solar panels. We're looking to purchase two one and a quarter megawatt generators at the price of one and a half million dollars. This is just for a backup of electricity because of how much electricity our water utility needs. With that being the case, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
All move.
Second.
Seeing no further comments, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to public hearing. Our first is Proposed Ordinance Number 21-001. Jim?
Actually, it's Shawna Bridgman, Assistant City Attorney here today.
Hi Shawna.
Hello. An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida approving the abandonment of a 12-foot-wide water sewer easement in conflict with scheduled cafeteria expansion plans at Citrus Cove Elementary School located at 8400 Lawrence Road, authorizing the city manager to execute a disclaimer which shall be recorded with this ordinance in the public records of Palm Beach County, Florida, and providing an effective date.
All right, I have a motion to approve.
All move.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any further comments? Any comments from the public? Anyone would like to raise their hands? Seeing none? May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Aye.
Commissioner Romulus?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Penzerga?
Yes.
The vote is 5-0.
Shawna, do you mind reading Proposed Ordinance 21-002?
An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida approving the abandonment of a 10-foot-wide water easement in conflict with scheduled cafeteria expansion plans at Citrus Cove Elementary School located at 8400 Lawrence Road, authorizing the city manager to execute a disclaimer which shall be recorded with this ordinance in the public records of Palm Beach County, Florida, and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve?
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Hay, a second by Vice Mayor Penzerga. Seeing any comments from the public? Seeing none? See any comments from the Commission? Seeing none. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hay?
Aye.
Commissioner Romulus?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Penzerga?
Yes.
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
The vote is 5-0.
All right, thank you. Moving on to City Manager's Report.
Mayor, Chief Gregory is available and I think Shawna may make some comments at first and then Chief Gregory to talk to you a little bit at your request from our last meeting regarding the public assembly and peaceful protest and how the police department handles those situations. I'll stop there. And Shawna, I think, were you going to open it up?
Yes, I have a very, very high level and general overview of the law which will frame the presentation that Chief Gregory is going to give. So with regard to freedom of speech, it's a First Amendment right which grants people the right to any type of speech. So whether or not the speech is kind or the speech is offensive or the speech is controversial, each individual citizen has a constitutional right to that speech. The content of free speech cannot be limited. And so if there's any law or regulation that requires someone to evaluate the content of a person's speech to determine whether the law or ordinance has been violated, that would be considered a content-based regulation and that violates the First Amendment. With regard to the right to assemble, the Constitution provides that the people have a right to peaceably assemble, to instruct their representatives, and to petition for redress or grievances. Areas such as a sidewalk would be a traditional form of public assembly. Areas such as a sidewalk would be a traditional form of public assembly. And in most cases, a permit is not required to assemble on the sidewalk or have communications or interactions on the sidewalk regarding free speech. There have even been some city ordinances that have been struck down. The intent of those ordinances were to prevent prostitution, but the broader application of the ordinance would prevent any person from standing on the sidewalk and talking and waving. And because the ordinance was so broad that it inhibited people's ability to assemble and speak on the sidewalk, even when they were not engaged in prostitution, the ordinance itself was struck down. So basically, the First Amendment prohibits the government from restraining or abridging the freedom of assembly and the freedom of speech. And with that in mind, Chief Gregory is going to give an, a, a, a talk about how the Police Department has been responding to this particular issue.
Um, before you begin, I, I, you know, I was looking at the Supreme Court case of Brandonberg versus Ohio. And the Supreme Court then said, you know, it's government cannot punish inflammatory speech unless the speech is directed to inciting or producing imminent lawless actions. Is that still true?
Right, like I said, what I, what I gave was a very high level overview of the law because anything beyond that would require a specific analysis of the facts on, that are occurring at that particular moment.
So overthrowing the government, is that considered a lawful action?
Yeah, no, overthrowing the government is not considered a lawful action.
Okay. So if someone is trying to overthrow the, the government, that is not considered free speech?
Right, you, you do not have a right to, to, to sedition or treason.
Okay. So now I'd like to hear from our police chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager. John, if you could put the presentation up?
Alan, do you have that ready? There we go.
Thank you, next slide. Okay. I may try to do this dual mode because on my screen I have the closed caption being written across certain portions of the slide, so bear with me a little bit as I try to run two, two windows at at once. So what you see there is a, a quick review, a couple of topics we're going to discuss. I, I listened to the conversation from last commission meeting and, and where that went. And it was a discussion of community policing and questions on police deployment and how we respond to, proactively to incidents that are occurring. So, so I'll, I'll try to quickly run us through some of those things in a short period of time tonight. So we'll talk about our community policing and how it is shaped and informed by the final report from the President's, from the President's Commission that had studied community policing and made recommendations for 21st century policing in America. So our policies coincide with many of the recommendations that came from that final report. Let's talk about police deployments. We'll talk about how busy we are in the Police Department with our, our call volume. And we'll talk about a little bit of crowd management and what are the different types of crowds that we encounter most commonly here in Boynton Beach. Our intelligence-led policing philosophies, and lastly, more of our proactive policing measures that are undertaken. Next slide, please. So as you see, with regard to the final report from the President's Task Force on Community Policing and 21st Century Policing in America, there were six pillars that were identified in that report and they had a host, I believe over 40 some, 40-plus recommendations totally. One of those pillars was pillar four and it dealt with specifically with community policing and its ability to assist with crime reduction in communities across America. Again, that undergirds our philosophy in the Police Department. It talks about things of infusing the, throughout our culture of the, the, the ideas of community policing, the, the, the elements of community policing, not just as a program, like the Knopf Office Program is just one program, but we want to put that through the whole of the Police Department. We want that to, to be spread through each of our officers and patrol, through our detectives and the detective bureau, that everyone operates under a community policing philosophy. The next point there talks about engaging in multidisciplinary and community teams approaches for planning, implementing, and responding to crisis situations. We also fundamentally believe in that as well and we look at that as we implement policy, as we look to interact with other groups outside the Police Department with a multi-departmental and multi disciplinary approach to any sort of crisis or critical incident that we respond to. That report also discusses, communities should support a culture and practice of policing that reflects the values and protection and promotion of dignity. We certainly believe in constitutional policing in, in the Boynton Beach Police Department. And we subscribe to and look to those elements when we implement training for our officers and also when we look to develop new policies that we're always conscious of instilling those values. Lastly, there it talks about community policing emphasizing working with neighborhoods and residents to co-produce public safety. And I personally really feel strongly about that. We want to work with our, our residents and businesses and, and other stakeholders in the community of Boynton Beach to solve problems, not just respond to calls for service. That's a conversation I have with the, the command staff quite often. It's not just looking at how we, how many calls we handle and, and how quickly we get them fixed and go to the next one, but how do we keep from having the same call from the same address over and over and over again? So we can try to work with the stakeholders to solve that problem and not just react to a call for service. Next slide. What you see there is our map of the city of Boynton Beach with a lot of lines on it because we break, we break the city down into a grid, a grid approach. So we, we, we subscribe to geographical-based deployments for policing in Boynton Beach. I know this is, is probably familiar to some of the commissioners and the mayor. However, for the, for the benefit of our, our viewing audience and others that are listening to the presentation, I want everyone to understand, as I get this question from time to time in, in community meetings. And it's how do we, how do we put the officers out in the city and, and are they just at the police station waiting for a call to come in on 911 and they respond out? And I, I'm quickly to say, no, they don't. The officers are pre-positioned around the city. You see there on the, the, also the city is also divided by 95 conveniently. So we have an east side and a west side. And you see on the east side of that map, the right-hand side, starting at the top is zone one. And then there's zone two, three, four, and five. They're all in the eastern sector of the city. On the left side of the map is the western side of I mean five, and you have zones six through 10 on that side. So there's an officer assigned each day to, to each of those zones. And overall, there's several officers responsible for each zone in the city. That is their area responsibility. They patrol there, they work there, they're expected to get to know the businesses and the community members who are in their zones and deal with the community crime problem as well as quality of life issues that come up in those zones. As well as being our eyes and ears of what's going on. If there's streetlights that are out, if there's a pothole issue or some tires being dumped or trash being dumped, be on top of those things, knowing what's out of place or reporting into the appropriate department to get addressed. And that also counts for if there is some sort of disturbances, protests, civil unrest that is occurring, we look to them. To be our eyes and ears and, and give us the heads up on that. So they have a lot of those proactive tasks to be engaged in, in their zone and area of responsibilities each day. On top of the calls for service that we respond to when people call 911 or call our non-emergency number. Next slide, please. So speaking of calls for service, this is just a quick snapshot of, of the volume that we, we respond to when we operate with here in the city of Boynton Beach. I looked at the months of November, December, and January, and on average during that period of time, we responded to 339 calls per day. That's nine, 911 and the non-emergency calls for service. That comes out to about 14 calls per hour. And as part of our conversation before, we had to deal with the events surrounding the tragedy at Sarasims Park on December 25th. On December 25th, we responded 305. We received 305 calls that day. The other qualifier of that statistic of three, of 14 calls per hour is that it doesn't stick to that. It's just an average. What actually happens is between midnight and probably 6:00 or 7:00 a.m., the call volume drops. Most people are sleeping bed, so it's not as high. We don't have the actual 14. It may be five to 10 calls per hour during that period of time. However, when when daylight comes and it's the busier part of the day, people get to get up and go to work and get to their offices and, and do their daily travels, the call volumes goes up. And so during those periods of time, we have an increase in calls. So it may be 20 to 25 calls per hour, maybe even higher on certain days during peak periods during the day. So it fluctuates. It's not static all day, all, at all times. We, we plan for that as we create our deployment plans, as how many officers are assigned to a shift and which shifts and when, what time the, the shifts should start and when they should end. We do a lot of this, this math. These math calculations determine the best deployment of our officers and we put them out there. So in addition to all the things we expect for them to do in their zones, for their zone responsibilities, they are constantly busy responding to and managing these calls for service that come in each day. And from that, I'll, I'll transition into the next slide, please, over to crowd management. And what does that look like? One more click. So there, as Shawna mentioned earlier, that First Amendment protections and the Constitution apply to freedom of speech and freedom of assembly. And assemblies, we can also say are gatherings. And as we know, we have all types of different gatherings in the city. They go from small groups in public places like picnics and socials, birthday parties, et cetera, in our parks and other places. As well as maybe block parties and pop-up social events. Block parties may start off innocent where there's just a, a party at someone's house for whatever occasion. And there's too many visitors. They don't fit in the home anymore. They don't fit in the yard anymore. And now they've taken over the street or, or the block. And it's outgrown the size of a person's home. Also, pop-up events, as you may recall, having some discussions a few months ago with regard to the tragedy of the motorcycle rider that lost his life in a crash and they had a pop-up memorial for, for him. We, that was unplanned. It was, uh, no one advised of, advised that of us in advance. We, we had to learn about it on our own and then respond to it as we, we found out, as soon as we found out about it as quickly as we could. And there were a couple hundred people, I guess, that, that came for that particular event. And that happens on different types of things that just pop up without any warning or advance notice or any permit requests. Then certainly have demonstrations, protests, marches, which maybe more appear to be what we see on 23rd Road on the overpass situation where people are expressing their, their freedom of speech to address either elections or things that they're in favor or things that they're against. And that's their, their right to do so in public ride-aways. As long as they aren't committing crimes, obstructing traffic, or creating hazardous situations or creating civil disturbances, as long as no laws are being violated, they, they have the right to express themselves. And then lastly, of course, we have riot situations like we saw play out in television and, and in a number of other cities that we haven't had here. But of course, that, that would fall in the category of those assemblages as well. Next slide. So we looked at intelligence-led policing, which is a, a philosophy that's been around for several years now, grown in popularity in policing circles and as, as far as dealing with the sharing of information and using data-driven decisions in, in policing. We talk about ongoing intelligence sharing with other partners. So we proactively talk about what are upcoming events, what are upcoming concerns to, from a policing perspective for different communities. We do know that we, we have a highly integrated population between Delray, Boynton, Lake Worth, Riviera, and Boynton, I'm sorry, West Palm Beach. Folks in each of those cities visit, visit our city quite a bit and folks from our city visit those other cities quite a bit. So we found it vital that the chiefs and the intelligence groups share information and talk. So we have monthly meetings with them and then on case-by-case basis, we have even more frequent information sharing discussions with those, those groups, those other police departments. So we all are, are knowledgeable in advance of something taking place so we can all prepare and be ready for it. Obviously, we, we do, as we can, monitor social media for public postings of activities and events. So we can be, we can have a heads up as to how large a group might be and how they may be impacted by traffic or how in traffic may be impacted by them and/or where they're going to meet to see if that place is sized appropriately for the size that's got, that's got, of the audience that's going to come. So we, we try to gather as much information as we can to ensure a safe environment for the folks who want to get, go to these places and express their, their freedom of speech and that we're prepared in case it gets unruly or disorderly, that we'll be in a, a position to address it as quickly as possible. We have weekly strategic patrol meetings to share information within the Police Department between our Patrol Division and our detectives who are gathering information from their sources on a regular basis. We want to make sure that the right hand knows what the left hand is doing, particularly inside our organization in a proactive fashion. And then, of course, we also participate in local and federal task forces. So we can share with partners, with other federal groups that have information that we may not be pervy to about things that may be happening other places in the state or a couple of counties away even. And we want to have the, the cast the broadest net of, of sharing of information we can. So we do use this intelligence-led policing follows philosophy to accomplish that proactive information sharing. Next slide, please. And that brings us to proactive policing measures. We have a number of them. Something as basic as routine patrol, which I discussed earlier. Officers are out there proactively in their zones, looking for things that are out of place, looking for groups gathering or disturbances or, or even dumpings and potholes and streetlights that are out. As well as taking calls for service, of which there are quite a few every day. So they have to positively respond to those calls for service and, and some of them, it takes more than one to respond. So if it's an alarm, it may take two or three officers to respond to address that alarm condition. If it's a burglary that's happened, it may take four or five officers to assist with setting up a perimeter and, and and actually responding to capture a suspect in a burglary situation. Well, those extra officers it takes for that one call, they're going to come from those other zones. And then when they're done with that call, they go back to their zones. So there's, there's constant play between the zones and the officers in them to respond to and address the calls for service and then balancing that with their regular zone responsibilities. As mentioned in the previous slide, we do obviously participate in regional intelligence sharing. That's a proactive police measure that we, we employ. We, we, we have a good handle on receiving anonymous tips from folks who just want to let us know about something that's coming up, an event or a problem in the neighborhood. Could be drugs, could be traffic, speeders. It, it could be anything. And we do take anonymous tips and we, we address them as they come forward. Confidential sources, that's people who we do know and have received information from and have somewhat of a relationship with that inform us as to things that are happening in the communities that, that may be of, of police concern. We, as the commission has supported us very much through the budget process with security camera deployments, we've been able to accomplish that in a number of cases and we're going forward with retrofitting other parks with cameras and then license plate reuses off. All of those things are proactive measures that we gives, gives, gives us a heads up on things that are happening before it can actually get to be a a tragedy or too bad of a situation. Lastly, I'll share with you the, the culmination of, where we're culminating, I should say, next slide. One of the big projects we were trying to get stood up in the Police Department, some of you may have visited the department during your tour and saw this big room that I call the Real-Time Crime Center. It had just a room. There was no desks, no tables. There was nothing on the walls. Well, it's come a long way since then. You can see in this image that we've got 15 monitors on the wall now. We've got our, our tables in, we've got our computers set up. And we can actually bring up the news. We can bring up cameras around the city. On the bottom lower screens, you'll, you'll see some data that's up there. Those, those are calls for service coming from our computer to dispatch system. So as calls are being, or calls are being made to 911, we can see the call and what it's about and where, where it's at on those screens real time. And so the folks who would be working in there in the future will be able to see those and see if we have cameras in those places to try to see if there's evidence that could be collected or suspect descriptions that we can broadcast back out to our officers and patrol. So they can quickly respond there with better information to make better decisions that makes it safer for them. It makes it safe for the, for the public in that general vicinity of where those calls are happening if we know exactly who we're looking for when we get there or what the circumstances are when the officers arrive. So I wanted to bring it there and I'll put a pin in it, stop talking. Let you all ask any questions you may have, but I kind of wanted to go soup to nuts from. Let, uh, you all ask any questions you may have, but I kind of wanted to go soup to nuts from where how we patrol proactively around the city, how we address these incidents, uh, how we, how we, uh, get information to be able to be where we can be as much as in advance as possible. Uh, but then when we get there, what we're looking for is, is there a crime being committed? Is there a disturbance in progress? Uh, otherwise, if it's just an expression of rights and people are, are not in agreement with what's being said, then that's not an action that the police can necessarily intervene in. Uh, so with that, I'll turn it back over to Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. And I, I appreciate this. And I think this is the, the reason why I want to have this discussion is basically for the commission, uh, to, to speak about what's on their minds because we have a police chief. We, we're not following the sheriff. And so we have the, the ability to direct our city manager with what we want to happen regarding the, the police department. I know many years back, the, there was a discussion whether we wanted to have a sheriff or not have a sheriff, you know, sheriff or have a, continue having our own police department. And we decided we understand, uh, the costs associated with having our own police department. But we want to make sure that we are doing the best for our residents and we have that, uh, ability. You know, I am pleased with everything that you're doing, uh, uh, Chief Gregory. I'm very excited for the ongoing technological improvements. Uh, I'm excited that we are moving forward with economic developments to help reduce the crime in our neighborhood that is based upon needs. Um, but the, the concern that I have is the protective nature, uh, the proactive nature uh, of what we can do for our residents. And, you know, for me, uh, looking up the legal aspects of protected free speech, it is a very high burden to convict someone of violating, uh, the free speech because you need imminent lawless action. And people on, uh, at block parties or people who are on bridges, there's not really imminent lawless action. Um, and in addition, it's that if it's imminent, it's going to be too late anyway for something bad to happen. Because unless the police are there monitoring the situation, they're not there and they have to uh, arrive after the incident has happened. Um, and that's kind of where, you know, I would hope that the, the commission would direct the city manager to say, we want to spend money to have overtime officers for the major holidays to protect our neighborhoods, that we understand that there is a standing protest on our Gulf Road Bridge and that we want to make sure that those residents or tour, or visitors from other cities are protected. And that we want to have an officer there, not to stop anyone from doing anything, but to make sure that they're safe. That bridge is not up to current standards of bridges. There is barely a barrier or wall that protects someone, a pedestrian from falling over. My experience today is that they weren't on the sidewalk. They were holding signs on the, to the people on the road because they parked their cars where, uh, it's technically a shoulder and slowing down traffic. And so my request from the, the commission is, is that we direct the city manager to have officers there when we feel that there's a likelihood of a big gathering during holidays and that any standing protest, we have an officer there, not to stop anyone from doing anything, but to make sure that everyone's doing what they can, uh, should be doing legally. Mayor. Yes, Commissioner Katz.
Or I guess through the mayor to the chief. Um, anytime we catch wind of any sort of public protest or, or gathering, is, is it in procedure already for police in that area to, you know, to monitor or, or be aware and, and potentially spend some time there just to make sure that they're not obstructing right away or they're not doing anything violent. Um, so is, is what's being requested kind of already done? And is the, is the mayor's request kind of just, just beefing up? Uh, or, or ensuring greater presence? Is that accurate?
Currently, our, our protocols, if we get, work wind of one of these demonstrations, we send someone over there to assess the size of it, the character of it, is it criminal in nature? Is it civil? And we, we then determine how many resources we need to assign, if any, uh, for, for what we see on the bridge. We typically have gone by and, and just kept an eye on it because they're usually there for several hours. Initially, we weren't babysitting that. Uh, we just went by periodically and checked on, make sure it was okay. As we received more complaints from the community and, and from you on the commission uh, of, of concerns about roadway, which we were able to see, uh, we did start stationing an officer to be there to, to stay and monitor. And they didn't see anyone in the roadway or obstructing traffic when they were there monitoring it actively as well. So that is a part of our currently, our current protocol, uh, for them to go there and stay and monitor the, the, on the bridge.
Chief, the December or Christmas Day where that the shooting occurred, do I recall correctly you telling me we had several extra officers on duty that day? Go ahead. I'm sorry. I just remember a conversation we had that we had extra patrols and people on overtime because of the holiday.
Yes, typically during the, uh, the shopping period and then, uh, into the holiday, we, we staff up a little bit with maybe with extra, uh, officers from our specialty units to supplement the folks. We also obviously want to let people have off for the holidays as much as we can, but we understand there's a balance there. So we did have uh, officers working on Christmas and we, we learned of the growing size of the people at the park. We had an officer assigned to monitor, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the gathering at the park that day.
Okay. So I don't, I don't fundamentally obviously have a disagreement with, you know, more police or is better in terms of monitoring situations. Um, Mayor, do, do you envision this? So I get if there's a, a protest on a bridge or, or some sort of march to provide, I guess, potentially security, but is, is this also something you're envisioning it per the incident that happened at, at Sims Park?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, when we had peace in the hood, it was mandatory that we had police presence there. Um, because they, you know, it was proactive community policing in the sense of that, hey, there's going to be a, a gathering here. We want to make sure the, the police are here in case something goes on. And we want to make sure that all of the people playing basketball are protected. You know, in the, in the city of Boynton Beach, you know, from the information that I have is that police were monitoring the situation over at Sarah Sims. However, uh, the red and blue lights were not on and the police, uh, cruisers were not in the same positions as they would for peace in the hood. And so that's kind of where, when we see legal activities going on in our city, going on in our parks that have the potential of being, uh, of turning bad very, very quickly, i.e. hundreds of people gathering. I would want to make sure that our community policing says is that police are here to make sure that everyone is behaving. Um, uh, I would kind of relay this to the, the fact is, um, you know, your experience as a teacher. Is there a difference in the classroom when the teacher's there versus when the teacher isn't there? Um, and, and that's kind of it is that I want to make sure that our residents are being protected. And the, the way we can do that is having police presence there. I, I'd like to, to move forward with that. Um, I know that it made a huge difference in the month of June when we had, uh, civil disobedience going on throughout our country. We made sure that everyone in the city was protected. We monitored everything. And I just want to go to that same old standard of let's make sure that we are protecting everybody like it is June twenty twenty.
So I get my, my question would be, is this something that, and correct me if, so your request is to, to direct the allocation of more, more overtime hours or just to ask the city manager to ask the police chief to have a more robust response to these events as they materialize? Did, that, am I mistaken? Did overtime was a part of this?
Yes, it would be both. It's in the senses that if we need to get another fifty thousand, a hundred thousand from reserves to make sure that our city is safer, that is something that I'm willing to do. Because I, I feel that, you know, what ha, you know, what has happened in the city in the past five years that we have been uh, on this commission, we want to change the, the course of the narrative. Um, we already have started it with our real-time crime center with, uh, the arrest of the suspects for the December twenty-fifth shooting. Um, and we want to make sure that everyone knows that crime is not tolerated here in the city of Boynton Beach.
Understood. So I'll, I'll, one more statement and then I'll let anybody else weigh in. Obviously, um, like I said, I'm not, you know, fundamentally opposed to anything you're saying. I'd request that for my own sake, prior to, to weighing in formally with a directive or anything of that nature, especially if there's financial implications, just to, to be given some time to speak on the, on your request with staff and with the police chief.
I, I, I would want to know other way. I think this is, is something that we want to have an informed decision. Um, you know, one of the things that I think, you know, we, we need to pride after we signed the Vision Zero, uh, resolution last year is to make sure that we are a Vision Zero city. And so I'll, I'll ask the, the chief. Are you aware of any, um, uh, unnatural causes of death for, um, through a crime or through vehicular travel? This in twenty twenty-one?
Unnatural causes of death.
So if someone get, dies riding a motorcycle, someone gets shot or stabbed?
Are you, are you saying how we had vehicular?
I'm, I'm, I'm asking for twenty twenty-one. I, I don't believe we've had.
Chief, did the motorcycle incident where the, um, elderly man on Ocean and Federal pulled in front of the?
I was, I was thinking of that last year. I'm thinking that one was this year and there may be one other.
Uh, yeah, that's what I, I, my recollection was it, it happened after January one. Cause I remember thinking, there goes our Vision Zero, because it was literally a couple of days prior. Mayor, you and I have been chatting about that. Um, we can confirm that for you though.
Okay. And, and that's kind of where, you know, I'd like, I know that, uh, our PIO informs of, of any sort of the, um, like I just mentioned, unnatural deaths, um, in the city, but that's something that we're, we, we want to try is that, hey, let's, if we didn't do it for January this year, let's try and do it for February. You know, today's the second and we don't have it. And let's see what we can do as a city to make sure that our, we keep our residents, our youth, our elderly, our businesses, um, business people safe when they come to the city of Boynton Beach.
Agreed.
Mayor.
Yes.
If I may, if I may jump in, I have a question for our city manager and perhaps the police chief. When I initially brought up the Christmas Day shooting, uh, one of the issues that I'm focused on here is where do we toe the line between, uh, shutting down an event uh, versus their freedom of right, uh, to assemble and speech? Uh, because my understanding is that obviously large events need a permit. But if, you know, many of these events, again, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, start off as very small and they happen every holiday season apparently, and they balloon to several hundreds of people. Um, and trying to handle a situation when there are already, you know, three, four hundred, five hundred people present is obviously a very di- dangerous situation to, uh, to manage. So where do we toe the line? How early of an event, uh, that is unpermitted? Do we let it grow until our police department may step in? Um, because I, you know, from what I'm hearing is that one of the recurring problems is that we have these so-called quote-unquote uh, spontaneous events. Uh, friends message their friends and then it gets to another city and it goes to to more cities and more and more people show up, uh, spontaneously. It's a surprise that they're all showing up at the same park. And at that point, well, that's, uh, well, that's a disastrous situation. So what do we do to prevent? And where do we cut off the line from events, you know, of neighborhood block party to one that gradually becomes out of control? Do we shut down events? And if so, when?
That's a great question, Commissioner. Thank you for asking it. Um, I'll, I'll just, uh, yeah, I think you hit the nail on the head. Because as you described, uh, your question, you went back and forth between three different types of activities that occur in these communities. So for one, uh, you, you made the term an event. Uh, and I'll, I'll add on that and organized event where there may be some sort of, uh, um, scheduled speakers, DJs, other things like that, that are part of any organized, pre-planned event. Uh, there, certainly those types of activities need to be permitted if they happen in public, a public right of way or a public park. And if we find out about that type of thing happening, we stump across either way, we're going to shut that down. That, that one's pretty plain and black and white, pretty, pretty plain and simple. Uh, if it's an actual event that has an organizer and someone in charge and there's activities that are occurring like speakers and DJs and or jugglers or clowns or bounce houses or whatever, we're going to close that down with, unless they have a permit or some sort of authorization from, from city officials. Uh, the other side of the coin that you mentioned is something that is unorganized, that some people get together and socialize like they do at Barrier Free Park or at ICP or Harvey Warrior, where that's what those locations are designed for. People to come together and socialize without having a permit. Uh, and there's no, and because it's not organized, there's no jugglers, there's no DJ, there's no, um, food tents or bounce house, bounce houses. These are just people who come to the park to socialize and talk with each other. And that, uh, isn't something that we would be able to just shut down arbitrarily because they haven't committed any, haven't broken park rules or violated some city ordinance or, or law. Um, at the point that we start to have a, a traffic congestion problem, that there's that many people, their traffic can't flow. Uh, this is a problem, obviously not just for the regular traffic, but if, if we need to have emergency vehicles uh, get through there or someone needs assistance and they couldn't get through there, that becomes the point that we now have, triggers it to become something we need to enter, uh, intervene in and, and respond to. But of course, that happens after the crowd is that large. Okay. So it's like, you can't shut down when thirty people come together. It, the park is large as Sarah Sims. But when there are so many people there that now are, are blocking the roadway, uh, inhibiting public safety traffic for fire rescue vehicles, police vehicles, someone needs assistance, people can't get in and out. Now that becomes a, a problem that we do need to manage. It becomes traffic violations. We can tow people, we can cite people with traffic tickets and we can start to clear out that roadway. We do this periodically now, uh, maybe a couple of times a month. We have our, our, our midnight shift offers, officers, uh, you receive a, a series of noise complaints where they, they stumble across themselves. Some sort of, uh, block party or whatever, where there's fifty, a hundred, a hundred and fifty people uh, outside of a, a, uh, outside in a street in front of a house or whatever, where the party's outgrown the, the yard. And our officers proactively shut those types of activities down as soon as we see that kind of thing happening. Uh, the, the, the question comes back into, so those kind of, the first one and the last scenario, uh, and a, a pre-planned organized activity that's unpermitted, we go in and we shut it down. The last one, a block party that's outgrown the house of the birthday port person and they're blocking the street and traffic can't get through, we will go through and shut that down. In a public place that's designed like a park for the public to come and socialize and hang out during park hours, uh, that is, that's something that we don't necessarily intervene in because that's the purpose of the park. At the point that that overflows the park and, and creates a problem in the community or excessive noise or, um, some other violation, that's where we can intercede there and, and address it. But again, that's only after it gets to be a certain size that, that makes it unsafe again.
Thank you, Chief. I think that answered most of my questions. And, and one of the very last things you said there was, yes, it's a public park. And I'm referring to Sarah Sims. And so people know that they can congregate there and, and those crowds can get larger. Um, and, you know, one of my questions here is it's not, what happened this past Christmas isn't new. I mean, it's happened before from my understanding. Um, and I'm starting to get a feeling that people are taking advantage of that fact, that it is a public space and it can accommodate very large numbers. And so I, I guess my last question for you now is just, And so I, I guess my last question for you now is just, do you have any recommendations as to what we could do perhaps to mitigate this happening at Sarah Sims again? Because what's happening is when these people come from other cities, wherever they may be coming from, it takes away from the actual people who live there who want to use the park and who want to have proper and good events, right? And so it puts a bad name indirectly, unfortunately, because of what these other people are doing. So is there anything we can do to prevent this from happening again? Because again, this is not the first time it's happened at Sarah Sims.
I, I, I think there are a couple of, of measure, additional measures we can take. We have upgraded Sarah Sims, as, as you are well aware. Once that park was redesigned, we've, we've implemented a number of security measures there from emergency call boxes to cameras to license plate readers and the like. But I, I'd like, I'd like to talk to, talk it over with the park ranger supervisor and some patrol staff and we can come back to you at a future date with a couple of recommendations.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate that.
Certainly.
Vice Mayor, just, you know, when, when we really look back, because that is such a fine line of when to intercede or interrupt. You had up until nine twenty that night, most of the entire day of people gathering in that park, having a wonderful time. And everybody was peaceful and it took one car to drive by to do that. And, you know, the, it, it's so they, they, everybody was peaceful and having a good time until somebody decided to drive by and shoot at that crowd. So how do, how do, can we ever prevent that? I, I don't know that that's totally possible. But, you know, we can also look at park hours and going into the evening times, whether or not, you know, you want to close the park altogether in the evening times. I mean, those are drastic measures too. But I don't know what else we can really do. It's, it's difficult because everybody there was, was fine.
And Lori, you know, I, I understand that. The, the issue is, is that I believe the police were aware of people drinking there. And after hours upon hours of drinking, that's when we need to make sure that our residents are safe. You know, it was very unnerving to see the video of our community leader of the year award running for his life because of the, the shots being fired. And part of that video did not show any of the police anywhere near that, that situation. And so that's kind of my whole perspective is, is that we understand that it, it is peaceful. But at a drop of a dime, it can turn unpeaceful and can turn violent. And so that's where when we see the likelihood of hundreds of people being in danger, we need to be proactive and have visible officers there so that people will make, people will don't just come through and shoot, shoot our residents randomly. You know, it's kind of like, that's why banks have security guards. It's, it's why so many of our schools have security guards. Is because they know that, hey, we can't wait for something bad to happen. We need to be there proactively.
Mayor, if I may make a statement and I have a question for staff. The statement is, at the end of the day, whatever we do, the message should be that Sarah Sims cannot be known as a place where this can happen and keep happening. You know, my concern is, again, these are from things I'm hearing, is that people know to come to Sarah Sims. People from other cities. And so we have to deter that message. Because if that's what people know, the, the place to be is Sarah Sims, then they're going to keep coming. And we don't want that. We don't want the same terrible things to happen. So that being said, I do have a question because you did mention the alcohol mayor. And so the question is this, because, you know, obviously you have the alcohol, you have weapons, it does create a powder, powder keg and you combine that with the numbers of people. On our public parks, is alcohol allowed? Could somebody clarify that for me? In unpermitted events, is alcohol allowed in our public parks?
Yeah, I don't know. No.
The answer is no?
Correct. No, it's not allowed.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes.
I'll, I'll let Commissioner Hay go.
Commissioner Hay.
I, I agree with what's being said. I just don't want us to focus just on activities. But I, I also, as we, as the police department look into this and bring it back to us, that we look at the statistics. Because there's, from a from a, a negative standpoint, there, there's, the numbers show that there's activity at other parks that we need to also consider and do something about. My thing in Sarah Sim is that we really need to, I think it's already been said, is to put more cameras in there. Also light it up. When I walk through there sometime, it's a drive by there, it's, it's pretty dark. And I, I think we need more light over there. You know, I think that would help. And I'm, when we see people with alcohol, as Vice Mayor just brought up. If we call the, the police department on anonymous tip, and we know that the, the truck, I see people getting alcohol out of the trunk. And if I call the police department, is that something that you guys going to respond to? Or you feel that that is not that high on the, on the list that you need to worry about? Chief, if you could comment on that?
As far as on the overpass, Commissioner?
Well, not, not on the overpass, but more or less in the parks. We, we've been talking a lot about Sarah Sims. And, and that's close by where I live. And I, I drive through there sometime and I see activity that looks suspicious. And sometime it's obvious, you know, there's, there's a little pack of store in the trunk. And so I guess what I'm asking is if I were to make a call to you guys, i- if that, is that enough for you guys to come out and investigate or, or it's just normal activity?
No, if, if it's a park, if it's a violation like that, you think someone's serving out alcohol in the park or, or some other violation of the sort, we, we certainly will come out and investigate it. The, the challenge may or may not be, as you are well aware, someone who's doing something like that, even if they're, whether they're passing out free drinks out of the back of their trunk, or whether they're selling drugs in the park, when they see us pull up in the marked unit, it's going to stop or shut down and that's going to, we're not going to be getting, able to get close enough to actually lock that down until we're there. If we have the ability to, to have on that particular shift to having an unmarked car or unmarked units available and we can then send them in there where they could be able to observe before the subjects know that we're observing, that helps out a lot too. And we're really looking to try to integrate the crime, the real time crime center into this mix. Only, only recently, within probably the month of December, we really got everything kind of up and running and fine tuned that we were prepared to be able to use it for the several events in January. And I'd like to really look at integrating that as a tool that when we can staff that up with more folks that now we get a complaint in Sarah Sims Park, we've got sufficient cameras that we can pretty much from there see and record evidence of that activity and then send the patrol car in afterwards. So there's a couple of different ways to address that, but it starts with people reporting that to us. We need to know about it and we will respond.
One other question, Chief. What, what's your take on Citizen Patrol? Because visibility from the security park rangers or whatever makes a difference. And in, in addition to, to park rangers, would volunteer Citizen Patrol be a difference? What's your, what's your take on that?
I like that, that program. I like when we can get folks interested in, in, in patrolling their neighborhoods. That's part of what we talked about earlier at Twenty First Century Policing and, and cope of producing safety in a cooperative environment and a team environment with the community. So yes, I'm, I'm an advocate of the program. I know it's been hamstrung by COVID this past year. So a lot of our seniors that are, are active in that program haven't been active because of the environment we've been in. But I'd like to see some younger adults in the community join the program and help police and patrol their neighborhoods. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so when you come back, I don't know if it'll be the next city commission meeting or the next, but incorporate that into your presentation.
Absolutely.
Mayor.
Yes.
So a question either to Chief or to Lori and staff. Most of our parks, correct me if I'm wrong, closed, you know, they're open from dawn till dusk, right? Is that like how? What are the hours of, you know, accessibility for Sims Park?
I believe ten o'clock at night because we do have the feature of the, we have the racquetball basketball courts that are lighted. So we do have a handful of parks that have lighted facilities in the evening time to play. So those, those parks are typically left open to nine or ten, I believe, in the evening time.
Okay, because I mean, and it, this isn't just for Sims Park, but obviously that's a, a center of issue on a, on a seemingly reoccurring basis. My concern with and it just kind of goes back maybe to Vice Mayor's comments earlier, is if, if it appears that a situation is brewing that violates city, city law, you know, they, they didn't get a permit and it, there's dozens and now hundreds of people showing up or they're, they're drinking in the park and it's not permissible. My personal belief is that we should, you know, be enforcing the rules on the books because my concern, and you kind of, I guess you saw it happening in a very different way at the Capitol a couple of weeks back, is that I don't know if putting an extra one or two or four police officers makes a difference when, when you go from having two or four to six or eight and there's four hundred people there. They're kind of, they're on their own. So I, I don't know if I err more on the side of trying to figure out how to wrangle these situations and allow them to happen versus when it becomes clear that it's escalating to a point that control is, is difficult to maintain and that laws are being broken, that you know, it, it should be up to the, I guess, discretion of the police in the area or supervisor to say, look, we, let's just not take the risk. Let's ask everybody to go home. Because I, I just always, in terms of the violent crimes and the shootings and stuff like that, somebody, I've, I've said this before, if somebody or a group of people, anybody who are willing to carry guns and shoot into crowds of people, there's no deterrent in the world that's going to stop someone with a mentality like that. So if there's more cops there, I don't know if someone who has that much of a mental problem that they believe that's a, an acceptable course of action in society, I don't know if it's going to stop it. So I'd, in terms of being proactive, I think that we need to empower our police to make a decision erring on the side of caution that if they think that this, something could spiral out of control anywhere in the city, to, to err on the side of caution versus kind of enabling it under the belief that we might be able to control it with a couple extra men and women in blue where their lives are now being put at risk and, and what I believe is sometimes an uncontrollable situation. So I don't, I don't know exactly what the point I'm trying to make, but I'd rather do something that that enforces existing rules and, and reinforces in our communities that these rules exist. You can't, you cannot do this. If you want to drink, drink at home, go to a bar. But if you want to get drunk and party, I don't know if Sims Park or the Dog Park in District One or the Meadows Park is the appropriate place to do that. So that, that's just kind of a editorializing on my part.
Thank you. Commissioner Romulus, did you have any comments?
Not at the moment.
Okay. And I have a, another question for the chief is that are we able to ask the Sheriff's Department for assistance? If we understand that we have hundreds of people and may not have the current manpower?
Yes, we have a mutual aid agreement in place with our neighboring police departments, including the Sheriff's Office to come and give assistance if we have a lawful action that we need to undertake to bring order into the city.
And do you, during your time as chief, have you had to enact any times for that?
We have.
You have?
We have not. No, we have not.
Okay, and so that's kind of my position is, is that let's start planning for the next time we have hundreds of people in Sarah Sims that aren't causing any problems. What is the scenario needed to make sure that it doesn't happen? How do we get our neighboring law enforcement agencies involved so that we can coordinate this? And so it is more safe for the people there. And that, you know, I, I understand what Commissioner Katz is saying. Adding two officers to a group of four hundred is not going to make much of a difference. And that we need to have backup right around the corner.
Mayor. I understand and we, we do that and we will continue to do that. I just implore you to also consider, as Commissioner Hay has, has alluded to earlier, that we just can't. When people are lawfully and socializing in the park at great numbers, for the police to come in and, and run them off, it's also a problem for the community and for the constituents that live in the neighborhood. It, it gives, or when a black guy, it gives the city a black eye. And we want to be very careful with how we address groups that are lawfully congregating in public parks.
I, I, I'm sorry for my miscommunication. What I'm saying is, is that in accordance with what Commissioner Katz said, is that you know, we don't want to put our officers at undue risk. And with that, you know, if we have officers there not to disperse people because they're acting lawfully, we're having officers there to make sure that they are protected. That is where I was hoping that because the officers are there, we speak with our neighboring law enforcement agencies to let them know this is the situation that we have. Are you available to help out? You know, I can relate to the, the events on January sixth when the Capitol Police Department needed assistance. It didn't seem that there was coordination with the surrounding law enforcement agencies.
Mayor.
Yeah.
One last comment for, for the chief. I'm, I'm sure that we are not the only city that's facing this type of problem with this size of a park. Because I know, you know, Delray Pompey Park and West Palm River Beach have similar situations. I know that you probably have or you will talk with those cities and, and talk about the best practices and what, what others are, are doing to, to combat this situation and that we may be able to, to glean from. And, and not just the local cities, just in general. So what, what's, what, what other cities are, are doing to, to help the situation out?
I'll be happy to share that with you when we discuss it again.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Mayor.
Yes, Commissioner Romulus.
One thing I just wanted to add to the conversation, it's not a question, it's more so just a clarification because I think this conversation is toggled back and forth. And, and it, it's not very clear in terms of, you know, which direction that we are trying to go in. We're talking about two separate problems. And I, I don't, I, I haven't heard, in, in, in my opinion, the solution because I think the two problems are separate in how they should be addressed. So we're talking about the issue on twenty third, if, if I'm not, if I'm, if I'm pronouncing properly. And then we're also talking about the issue at Sarah Sims Park. Those are two different things. Those are two different scenarios, in my opinion. And I also think that they should be addressed. And, 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 you know, the resolution. And, 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 you know, the resolution for them is different. So, I haven't heard that. Again, correct me if I'm on here, but I haven't heard that cuz like, again, I, I think that there are two different solutions to these two problems.
And I, I have to disagree with you. I think they're the, the same issue. It's just, there's two different groups of people doing it and one is a lot less. And I think the, the response should be similar in the sense is that we have officers there to make sure that the people that are using their First Amendment rights to use a public park, to use a public sidewalk are protected.
Okay, so that being said, I will clarify my point. Sarah Sims Park and the events that happened there, it's a situation of, you know, individuals gathering for some type of block party or community event or whatever, whether it's permitted or, or not. That gathering is happening. It then escalated into something atrocious, obviously. The situation with that, one, did these individuals have a permit? I'm, I'm not sure. I'm assuming not. And this was a public park, so they are allowed to gather. They may have been doing activities that were illegal at the time, such as drinking and, and other things. But they are allowed to gather there. The bridge situation, that is, in my opinion, something completely different because that is just a, a, a group of people choosing to rally or, or assemble or, or protest or whatever that may be. And they're doing that and in the process of doing it, putting potentially themselves and others at harm. The bridge is not a public park. It's not a gathering spot. And so, in that situation, based on what you were recommending earlier, that would be a situation where since we cannot stop them from assembling, since we cannot stop or, 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 since we cannot prevent them from expressing their freedom of speech by, you know, assembling and, and protesting, then we can provide for one or two officers to be there, to be present, to make sure that things are safe and that nothing escalates and that, you know, they're not blocking traffic and, and cars aren't potentially, you know, getting in the hazard of having somebody jump in their way or something like that. That I would agree with. The Sarah Sims Park situation, I don't think that will be resolved with having one or two officers there. It, it may perhaps prevent it from escalating to, to something that happened, for example, what happened on Christmas. But I don't think that that situation should be handled the same way. So, that's just my input in terms of this conversation. I've been listening to it back and forth and, and it, it just kind of got, in my opinion, lost in translation a little bit because I think the two should be treated separately. I don't think they are one and the same issue.
Mayor, if I could just intervene real quick with a, a quick recap, short recap of how we address either one of those and that is that we respond to both the bridge and to the park when we find out that there's a gathering. We assess-
I want to just interrupt you. Sorry for that. I want to make sure that, you know, allow the, the Commission to speak. We have discussed this item. I don't think we're gonna solve the issue tonight. So, I want to thank you for giving us the, the recap and I think we're gonna move on to the next item after this.
Mayor Grant, if I may, there is an audience member who would like to provide some comment.
Okay.
Mayor.
And I will-
I would like, I would like to hear the Chief complete his comment on, on, on that difference and, and how they treat it. I, I, I think he had not finished that comment. I would like to hear.
Yes, I would agree.
So, Chief, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just wanted to briefly, briefly just recap how we address both of those scenarios. They're both gatherings in public places. We respond with a patrol unit. We assess the character of the gathering, whether they're, they're being sociable or civil or whether it's criminal, criminal activity that's occurring. Based on no laws being broken, we will monitor it and stay in the area and or at the activity. If there is criminal activity taking place, we will intervene and address it. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I do see a hand raised from, from the public audience and so I'm gonna allow them to, to speak. Ace Ratcliffe? You're currently self muted if you'd like to speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I'm Ace Ratcliffe. I'm at 142 Southwest 13th Avenue. And so, I just kind of wanted to back up what Commissioner Romulus was saying in terms of these being two separate situations. My first question in regards to the Sarah Sims or the gatherings at the parks is, I didn't hear anything from the Chief in terms of us having a nonviolent task force or a nonviolent training for police officers because all of the offenses that we're talking about in that situation are nonviolent and it seems like we need training that is specifically focused on that. And then to follow up on that, my husband and sibling and I, through October and November, were out there counter protesting against the people who are, are on golf. And I gotta tell you, we did have the police out there on several occasions and, you know, I'm curious about what the Chief is doing in terms of the police having bias because in situations there, the police was called out because the protesters were breaking traffic law. They were jaywalking. They were obstructing the traffic. They were publicly intoxicated and publicly drinking. There were multiple situations where they were threatening us or breaking our property and the police that were called out absolutely did nothing about that. They didn't even interact with us as counter protesters. They wouldn't look at us. They were very chummy with the other protesters, but they dealt with absolutely nothing. And this was something that we saw repeatedly while we were out there on a schedule. It was every Friday night. So, we certainly did not feel safe. We didn't feel like we were being taken care of.
Thank you for your comments, Ace. And so, I think what we need to have is that, I don't know if we can do it at our next meeting. I'd like to give us, you know, 30 days to have it at the beginning of March and have an opportunity for the Commission to speak with the, the Chief to see if we can't get some more information about what we can do to make sure that the city of Boynton Beach is as safe as possible.
Certainly. And, you know, if anybody, I, this is again, a thing where I had to reach out a couple of times because we had police officers who were driving by in their vehicles and expressing support for the Trump supporters, even though they are supposed to be neutral while they are in, you know, their vehicles. You know, we have plenty of video and evidence of the laws that were being broken and the way that we were attacked, but that was not something that, that was taken care of for us. So, I think that there are a lot of discussions that need to be happening here that are not necessarily what you guys are talking about as a Commission.
All right. Thank you so much. Our next item, at the request of the Commission, the utility is pleased to present a summary of recent stormwater management improvements, current maintenance activities and plan work to address recent neighborhood flooding issues.
Thank you, Mayor. Our utility director, I believe Joe Peternidi, is going to present a brief report to you.
Thank you, Lori. Thank you, Mayor Grant. John, if you please prepare the presentation for me, please. I want to thank the Commission for giving us the opportunity to share with you what the utility is doing regarding stormwater management within the city. Next slide. Please. The utility is responsible for operating and maintaining all the public stormwater management systems within the city limits. And we operate under a National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permit. We have to report to the Florida Department of Transportation annually on some of our maintenance activities. We're also taking the lead on the National Flood Insurance Program's Community Rating System that focuses on mitigating flood damage and we currently provide a 20% discount through, through these efforts to our citizens for their flood insurance premiums. Next slide, please. In this presentation, I wanted to show the, the annual NPDS report. And I wanted to outline some of the work we've done over the past six years since the 2014 rainstorm that dumped a lot of water and stormwater on our community. And then I want to identify some of the study area priorities and show what we're doing with the staff to address these issues. Next slide, please. Now, this slide is not intended to be an eye exam. I do want to show you that it's a little hard to read, but I do want to show you some of the infrastructure that we're responsible for maintaining and operating. This has to be submitted to, like I said, DEP annually and it shows all our infrastructure assets on the left-hand side. We have 30 miles of swales roughly. 20, next slide, please, too. We have 22 miles of pipe that we have to inspect every 10 years. So, we inspect probably 10% or more annually of the 22 miles. We have over 550 catch bases that we have to inspect every five years and maintain as well. So, this table goes to the DEP annually that shows our activities annually. Next slide, please. Here's another eye chart. This shows the work we've done in constructing stormwater management improvements since the, the 25, 2014 storm. Over the past six years, the utility has invested and constructed over $12.5 million dollars worth of that stormwater improvements. Most of those, that work has been done by our utility contractors, which is shown in green there and our utility staff has, I completed over a half a million worth of construction of utility and stormwater improvements over the past six years. Next slide, please. This is a map of the north portion of the, the city limits and it highlights some of the items that were on the map on, excuse me, on the table, previous table. And it shows you where we've completed these improvements. Some of the construction improvements are North-South Road. We're planning and, and in the process of formalizing contract documents and for the Demick and Potter area. We've received an $850,000 grant from the flood, flood mitigation from FLEMA to do this work. We've also done work on First Street, north of Gateway and Second Street, south of Gateway that's shown on this map. Staff is also entering all this information into our GIS system so we can have a dashboard to keep track of all that activity and, and what was done in those areas. Next slide, please, John. This is a portion of the southern and it shows the Central Seacrest area, Harborview Estates. So, this is kind of what the utility has done in the past six years. Next slide, please. This slide shows, based on the recent storms we had in October, the utility has identified these areas for study and long-term study. We're engaging this slide and the next slide, we're engaging an engineering consultant to do a long-term plan to, to study this area and, you know, develop long-term improvements to develop a budget so we can budget those improvements. This happens to be the Sandcastle area, just east of 95 where we had some difficulty through, in October this past year. Next slide, please. This is another priority area that we've identified, the Boynton Lakes Estates, Lake Boynton Estates, excuse me, and the and the industrial drive area. That drainage needs to be looked at again as well as the Chapel Hill area. So, we're having consultants give us a proposal to do a long-term evaluation on that to, to provide a long-term solution. Next slide. In the meantime, our staff is, is looking at areas and we're putting in some improvements as well to help mitigate some of this flooding that we received Steve recently. This slide shows North Palm Drive and Ocean Parkway in the Sandcastle area. Next slide. We're also doing, staff is also doing some improvements. I think they're currently out there this week doing improvements, installing exfiltration trenches and underdrain systems in the Chapel Hill area. And the next slide, please. There's a third area we've identified as well as near Betty Thomas Park on Southeast Second Street that we're gonna be installing some exfiltration trenches. Staff has been doing this. Next slide, please. To summarize, you know, we, we're monitoring and inspecting our facilities annually, doing a good job of that. We're investing in improvements throughout the, the community since the 2014 storm. We're also focusing on three study priority areas that we're gonna do some long-term improvements, hopefully budgeted for those. And then utility staff is, is continuing to do work in these areas to help improve the stormwater management. I want to ensure the Commission that utility staff is, is doing everything we can. We're committed, responsive and, and, and very capable to improve the, the services to our citizens. So, I want to leave that with you. And we look forward to your comments. Next slide. Next slide, John. We're done. And hopefully that rainbow will help make things better.
Thank you, Joe. And yes, only after does it rain do you get the rainbow. My, my quick question is the, I guess, part two of the Central Seacrest Corridor, is that finally finished?
The work is finally finished. We're doing a reconcili change, reconciliation change order on that prod, on that project right now. So, we're working on the final payment to the contractor. Yes, it's done. Thank you.
Okay. I, I'm glad to hear that that's finally finished. I'm sure a lot of the, the neighborhood is happy not to have the, the construction going on.
You actually.
And, and I would just want to thank you for what you're doing. And I know that our sustainability coordinator with the, the utility department is doing what they can to, to help with the stormwater. I know that when you, you're planting some of these pine trees and other trees that they absorb a lot of the stormwater. And so, I'm glad to hear that. Forget the tree giveaway that we did of all the native trees. We had some leftover and that went to the associations that could use a little bit more canopy. And so, I'm happy that the city is moving forward with the, the, of more, the having more trees that we're working with the CRA and I just can't wait to, for the city to plant some more trees.
Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner Romulus?
Yeah, I'd like to ask Joe, because these areas are areas that have been really hit in the last few months and, and years with rain events. So, what are we doing to communicate with the residents about the progress that you just mentioned?
Well, once we get the, the work done by the consultant, we have in their public outreach to, to help educate the public on what, what the plan is, the long-term plan. We're in the development phase right now, Commissioner.
Okay, and can you give me a rough timeline?
Well, we're gonna bring that proposal to you in the next commission meeting. So, you'll be able to approve that authorization. So, we're talking probably this summer.
This summer for what exactly?
For a conceptual design and, and public meetings.
Okay, and then possible shovels in the ground and start fixing some of these issues when?
They're, they're going to be putting together a cost estimate and we're gonna have to evaluate what the long-term solution is. Right now, our crews are out there working on some exfiltration trenches and some swelling to help alleviate some of the short-term and the near-term issues with lighter storms. But in order to drain that area, you're going to have to provide some sort of positive output to a canal. And, you know, the topography in that area doesn't really lend it, lend itself to that, but we're hoping that we can figure out a way to, to do that. So, either water drains over the surface or it seeps into the ground with the high water table that we have. It makes it a little difficult. If we've had sustained rains and, and sea level rise and the level in the canals that are around, that keeps the water table perched and, and it's hard for this, the differential elevation to, to drive that water into the ground.
Joe, if you can, please just send me, or Lori, whoever would do this, send me a, a visual report of the work that's currently being done because I, I think it's important. I mean, it's important for these residents to see that their concerns and their complaints, especially over the last few months, are not going unnoticed and that there is work being done. So, I, I'd like to see that in some tangible form, whether it's in the form of pictures or some type of report showing what's being done currently to help alleviate some of these short-term or- or the short-term alleviations to the issues. And then something more long-term drafted to give a plan of what we're going to be doing to help fix this over the period of time.
Yes, Commissioner Romulus, I think with, with the simple terms of what Joe was saying on that one, I think the long-term solution is going to be probably very, very expensive. So it was somewhat non-committal on capital funding, and depending on what the solution may be, we, we have a couple of ideas that we need them to vet out, but it's going to be a matter, a matter of potential grant funding and/or budgeting in our capital in the, over the next several years. I, I don't see a shovel in the ground immediately for the long-term solution just yet. But we'll certainly gather the other information. I can get that to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Joe, Joe, did I understand you to say that you got eight hundred thousand plus in grant money for the northern part of the city?
Yes, correct. Yeah, our staff applied for a flood mitigation grant through FEMA, and we were awarded eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Some of that's been spent already for the design of that improvements to the Lakeside Gardens area. And we're waiting for them to review the final construction drawing so we can proceed to construction. But yes, we did receive eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that. The project's probably about one point two. We have a seventy-five, twenty-five, where the city has to pay twenty-five percent of those improvements.
Joe, what is your plan for North Wind's first court? I didn't, I don't think I heard that area, which has been a constant problem over the many years. All right, right there, east of I-95 off of Gateway.
Yeah.
That area?
Yeah, we have, we have built a lot of swales in that area. That area is right up against ninety-five, and we're getting a lot of flow. Excuse me?
Well, don't worry.
Yeah, well. Okay, we can, that's one of the things I wanted to talk to you guys about tonight, is get your input on where you'd like to see additional effort.
So.
We definitely.
Offwind's first court. I'll talk to, to Laura and the rest of you about it offline later. We don't have to make that sitting tonight, but I certainly don't want that to be overlooked.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, if there's no one else that, from the commission, is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak? Seeing none, we will move on to the next item of discussion, refined direction for an ordinance prohibiting the use of polystyrene foam products in city facilities and on city property.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This is Rebecca Harvey, Sustainability Coordinator. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Great. John, I do have a few slides if you don't mind putting those up for me. So this discussion tonight follows from the November seventeenth meeting where we presented options for regulating the use of expanded polystyrene foam on city property and by entities engaged in contractual relationships with the city. And I'd like to quickly thank Ms. Uden for speaking earlier and reminding us all about the well-known environmental impacts of expanded polystyrene foam and other single-use plastics as well. So I do have a few slides. If you can go to the next slide, I'll go through them quickly and remind you that these are attached as well as an executive summary with more detail. This table is a review I showed last time, just summarizing seventeen cities and counties in Florida that have such ordinances on the bill. Banning polystyrene from city property and by use by city vendors and special events for Matisse. Next slide, please. Okay, so November seventeenth, there was support for, for moving forward with an ordinance, and the discussion topics that we'll review today quickly are what materials to regulate, to whom the regulations apply, education and outreach, and implementation and enforcement. And on the next slide, the first issue is the materials to regulate. I don't believe we have much discussion left to have about this, but I would just ask you all for confirmation, really, that what we're moving forward with is polystyrene foam footwear, unencapsulated polystyrene foam products such as the coolers and beach and pool toys that are not covered in a more durable material. And the mayor also added at our previous discussion, plastic confetti. So think about if there are additional items or if this is the final list that we would include. To the next slide. To whom the regulation applies, I also, from what I understood, not a lot of disagreement here. There's consensus that we would be prohibiting foam use and distribution on city property and by our contractors and vendors, as well as in by members of the public in city parks and beaches. The devil is in the details a little bit, and we can talk about that in a moment. So moving on to the next item, education and outreach, I think we have consensus, and it's certainly the best practice that education is a major component of the ordinance. And that we would have at least a year-long educational program prior to enforcement of any penalties. Moving to the next slide. Okay, so for implementation and enforcement, three different sections here. The first one is for city contractors and temporary vendors. This is straightforward. It is incorporated through the contract enforcement proceedings whereby the penalty is termination of the contractual relationship or revocation of a special event permit. Next slide. Regarding enforcement for individuals or organizations who rent city facilities, there would be three options, and so this is something we can, I would, I would like to request further direction on. Option one would be a Keep Boynton Clean Pledge, where we would provide educational materials to the individuals who rent, when they, upon signing their agreement to rent a facility, and they would receive a discount on, on the rental. This is something that would not take a lot more staff time to enforce or implement once the policy is in place. Option two was raised at our last discussion, which is similar, but a little different, would be a deposit where people would pay that upfront, that revenue could be kept for our environmental programs. This would require more staff time to do inspections either during the rentals or afterwards. And then the third option would be an outright prohibition and, and a penalty from using the facilities in the future, and that would in turn require additional inspections. So moving on to the next slide, almost final slide, and then the question of implementation and enforcement for general public users in our parks and beaches. I believe all the commissioners were in consensus, again, that education is the top priority. If we were to include financial penalties, we would do just warnings alone for at least a year prior to enforcement. And I do request a bit further direction about whether to assess fines as part of the ordinance. Several of the comments here are highlighted that you can see on the slide here that this, there is a desire that the ordinance does need to have teeth to be taken seriously, could be enforced by park rangers, but also should be realistic and not overbearing and not focused on penalizing. So that's, I think, the main question left at this point. Our next steps are to bring a draft to you. And then to move forward with developing the educational program, developing the Keep Boynton Clean Pledge, and incorporating it into our contracts and agreements. At that, I will turn it over to questions or discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Would anyone like to go first?
Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question. If whoever's controlling the slides could go back to the three options. There we go. Thank you. And we all agree, education, we want to begin there. We want to be realistic. We want to be gradual in how we enforce these policies. I have a question regarding option two. I mean, I really like the idea of option two, because what it does is it puts skin in the game, and I think that will be more effective in the long run. Of course, we don't have to just have option two. It could be a combination of things. But it occurred to me, this idea of a deposit, you know, when people use our parks for events, I mean, I, I've never had to organize a large event at one of our parks, but do they have to already put down a deposit? They do. All right, fantastic. And it's part of keeping the venue clean post-event part of that deposit system, because this sustainability deposit idea, I mean, I'm in favor of that, but I suppose it doesn't have to be limited to not using polystyrene foam products. It could be making sure, in addition to this, that our parks remain clean, should there be large events. So I wanted to just get staff to weigh in. Is that an issue that we're having in our parks or perhaps not? How does the current deposit system work?
Colin Groff, Assistant City Manager, I'll try to answer that. Yes, there is deposits that are provided for things. You know, the challenge has been inspecting after events because it takes staff time. As we develop our park rangers program, I think that gets a little bit easier to do, so we can believe that options can be implemented fairly easily. It does take some staff time. So, you know, we may have to look at some of our fees and some of those to adjust them to cover that, but it would be a deposit, and afterwards, if we inspect and the site's clean and there's no evidence of using any of the polystyrene foam products, then their deposit would be returned, just like, just like the rest of the deposit.
What numbers are we talking about? What's the deposit?
Option two. Oh, the deposit, how much is the deposit? You know, that's a great question. I don't know. I can't, I wish I could do that.
Colin, I don't, we don't collect security deposit for pavilion rentals. We do in building rentals, like the Intercoastal Park Clubhouse rooms. But we don't collect deposits if someone perhaps rents the pavilion in Intercoastal Park or Saracen's Park. So.
Right, that's correct. It's, but we have the system set up to collect deposits.
We can, right.
All right. Well, thank you, Steph. I appreciate that clarification. For now, Mayor, I want to make sure everybody has, we go around the commission, of course, but I don't see why we couldn't do all three options, and we do it gradually. And so I'd be in favor of all three as time proceeds.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yeah, I would also agree with all three options, and I'd like to start off with option one and option two, so that if someone does not want to sign the Keep Boynton Clean Pledge, they will be required to pay the sustainability deposit. It's kind of a dual effect, saying that we're not limiting someone's use to styrofoam or polystyrene foam. However, we are incentivizing people not to use it. I think that's the, the best way to change the habit. In addition, when I was working with Boynton Cares, the plastic confetti was, I think, the worst aspect of it, because you're talking about tiny little plastic that would get, you know, any brush of wind or breeze of wind, blow it in the grass, and it was almost impossible to pick up. And there's just so many pieces, and so I would hope that we can put the plastic confetti in that as well.
I support that.
And so, Commissioner Romulus?
Mayor, yeah, I wanted to chime in. I just wanted to, of course, thank Ms. Harvey for kind of getting this to the finish line and to this point. I concur with what my colleagues have said so far, and I would definitely like to move forward with this. And regarding her question earlier, in terms of are there other, other additional items, I would also ask for you to please check in with the group that initially asked us to pass this ordinance, just to make sure that we are covering all of our bases, as I'm sure you probably already have, but I just wanted to make sure that if we are missing anything, there would be a good resource for catching that.
No, and I would, the extra item that just came to mind is helium balloons. You know, we, we've heard stories where the, you know, helium balloons can get away from people, and it, once it gets, you know, once it gets into the atmosphere, you don't know exactly where it's going to land. And being us close to so much water, as if we have an eastward wind coming, like from the Gulf Stream, it's going into the ocean. And so you know, I'm not saying balloons, I'm just saying helium balloons. So that's also something that I'd like to be a part of the Keep Boynton Clean Pledge or Sustainability Deposit.
Mayor?
Yes.
I guess to staff, so I mean, it says that inspections are necessary, obviously, to, to determine if people either upheld the pledge or if, once we got to option three, they violated the ordinance. Like, what is that? What does that look like? So someone working at a park sees or inspects, and then hypothetically, under option two, they, they lose a deposit, I guess, what happens if someone lies? Like, what if someone says, oh, yeah, I'm going to sign the pledge, and then we see that they had styrofoam or prohibited substance? Like, how do we adjudicate this if somebody lies or someone denies or refuses, because disputes are inevitable anytime there's, you know, any financial repercussion? Well, how would staff, it might be early for them to respond to this, but how would they address a dispute, or what would someone's recourse be if they claimed, you know, they just repeatedly denied that they violated it and they want their money back?
You know, for myself, is that, you know, we understand we're not going to inspect everybody at all times. It's trying to create a random thing, whether, hey, it's every three or four applicants, we're going to check them. So the public doesn't know how many people, what number they're going to be. And I think that's the, the best way, because, correct, I don't feel that it is imperative that we inspect everybody, but if we do it on a a routine basis that we keep aware of, it, it makes sense. And that, that's, that's kind of where I, I see it, is that we have to have enforcement of this. However, it's not something that we plan on doing it for everybody.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner, hey?
I do, I do agree with colleagues here on, on doing all three on a on a gradual base. I, I think we all agree that we, we don't need this in our, in our city and our water mainly. So it's a, it's a done deal as far as I'm concerned. We just need to, to implement it over time.
Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question for Ms. Harvey, and Ms. Harvey, thank you for the work that you're doing. And I don't recall if I've asked this question before, but when we tackle problems, I always like to know, you know, what are the key sources? Because when we want to tackle anything, you can't tackle it all at the same time. And, you know, the reason why we're focused on city facilities is because that's what we can control directly. But just general knowledge, if you could just educate myself and the general public, who do you think are the greatest or what are the greatest sources of this in the city? Of these foams? If you could wave a magic wand, what's the number one thing to go after?
Thank you for the question. Not sure I've quite thought of that answer before, but I, I believe in my first presentation, I had a couple of slides on the environmental impact, and it, I think the, the reason we're attacking, and you also, Commissioner Pennsler, articulated this last time, that the reason we're attacking polystyrene foam as the first low-hanging fruit is because it's so lightweight, it blows away so easily. So what I see, just, you know, anecdotally and in the literature, is it's just, it's one of the most common forms of litter, because overflowing trash cans or just, you know, casual littering or unintentional, it, it blows away. So I So I, I think it's diffuse, it's dispersed around our public lands. And are you asking which locations or which user groups?
Yeah, I'm just thinking more generally. I mean, there's a part of me, Rebecca, that's thinking, I wonder how much our school systems contribute to this. But, I mean, I'm not on a single amount, but I'm just thinking of them as one examples, you know. Who are or what are the key sources, the greatest polluters, if you will, in terms of styrofoam or the greatest users? But, no, but I appreciate your response, but those are just kind of questions that I'm asking.
I don't have that at my fingertips. Perhaps Ms. Uden does, if she'd like to speak up. But I would say it's takeout, probably, and it's just users of our parks and beaches in general, but I think probably a lot from restaurants.
Thank you so much, Ms. Harvey.
And I'll ask if the commission has anything more to say. We do have public comments online.
Yes, Mayor, one more thing.
Yes?
I'm just going to ask if it would be possible to incorporate this into our, maybe getting the name of the program wrong, our keep, our businesses program? Is there a way to, have we incorporated that? I missed that part.
Yes, Commissioner Romulus, we do. It is the Green Business Recognition Program is what you're thinking of. And we're just starting to actively promote that again after a break due to COVID. It's focused on these things. It's focused on no styrofoam, no plastic bags, not giving out straws except upon request. So it's leading by example. This ordinance would dovetail with what we're doing with the Green Business Program, which is voluntary, showing that the city is leading by example.
Okay, and I guess what I'm asking is if this would be one more thing that would be put on that checklist of things that businesses can do? Just clarify.
Oh, well, if they are, if they are a vendor at an event of ours, because again, this is only for city property. Is that what you mean?
Right, that's what I'm asking. I know that this is only, geographically, this is only, this is an ordinance really on us or for us or about us. But I guess what I'm saying is, can we add this as an optional thing that businesses in the Boynton Beach area can do? And it could be part of the initiative, Green Business Initiative?
Yes, we.
And of course, we're still not penalizing or adding any type of fine or anything, but just kind of making it as part of that incentive program where they're getting some type of perk for participating in this program.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you.
We can highlight this and more. Thank you. I do have one more question for commission that was not answered that I heard, which was just the question of any type of fines to include in the ordinance, with the understanding that it will be education only for a set period of time, probably one year, and that that would be written into the ordinance. But as far as what we draft in it, would you like to see financial penalties applied after that educational period?
My personal opinion is that we have the deposit, so we don't have to find somebody and charge them additional money. And that's, that's kind of where we move away from, you know, I like the two options that we have with the Keep Boynton Clean Pledge, Sustainability Deposit. The aspect of, you know, prohibiting and adding a fine, we kind of move away from the pledge because it's no longer required or no longer voluntary, it is required. So, you know, I'd let any future commissions decide whether they want to, you know, make it a requirement that we ban all polystyrene foam and create a penalty versus a pledge and a discount or a sustainability deposit.
Mayor?
Yes?
I'm on board with you that I'm not at that stage where I want people who just show up to facilities and might have a cup that's not an approved cup, being written a citation as if they, I guess, committed a more serious infraction, in my opinion.
And so do we have anyone else from the commission or we want to hear from the public first? All right, I'm going to let the public speak. I know Jamie Hamilton. You are currently unmuted. If you'd like to state your name and address for the record?
Yes. Hello, my name is Jamie Hamilton. I live at 2401 PGA Boulevard. That's in Palm Beach Gardens. I'm the current Chair of the Palm Beach County Chapter of the Surf Rider Foundation. And we've been working with Kat Uden and Rebecca on getting an ordinance or something of the sort passed. And we're actually very excited to see that you guys are focused on this serious issue. And we thank you for taking it seriously and bringing it this far. One point, there's been a lot of points made that we agree with on a whole, you know, pointing at the issues of plastic pollution and how they affect everybody across the board, everyone globally. And it is a very serious issue, whether it comes to, you know, giant pieces of plastic that are easy to pick up or the more invasive microplastics that are really the crucial issue here. And when it comes to EPS foam, not only is it light that it, you know, blows away, but it also very easily breaks apart into microplastics a little faster, not as, you know, bad as the other plastics, but just faster than other plastics will turn into microplastics. So it's almost like it's a more urgent issue to tackle that first. So I also wanted to add in there, though, that we totally agree with having the educational period in the beginning. We've seen other cities have success with having the six months to a year period of just educating the public and businesses on why it's so important to follow this ordinance and why it's so important to move away from plastics and more importantly, cut it off from its source. So we totally agree with that, and we're glad you're on board with that, too. And after that first year, we've definitely seen cities have huge, you know, success with actually having a fee implemented and encouraging people to make that change in their behaviors. If the hardest thing to do is change those habits, you know. And part of the educational program, we'd love to help you guys with because we're all volunteer-based in this organization and in Palm Beach County Chapter. And we do have a lot of resources that we can offer for you. And one of them is called our Ocean Friendly Foodware Guide. And it actually offers restaurants and people alike, but mainly towards restaurants, a buying guide. And it tells them the different options for takeout containers, cold cups, hot cup straws, utensils, plates and bowls, all things like that, shows them the costs and the benefits. It shows you all kinds of great information. So we'd love to be a part of the education process with you guys and help them any way that we can. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next hand raised is Tom Morky. Tom, go to the floor.
Okay, I'm unmuted. Thank you. Tom Morky, Worcester Road. I volunteer also as stakeholder liaison for the Palm Beach County Chapter of Surf Rider Foundation. I helped start the chapter here 22 years ago. The polystyrene regulations, by the way, one of the key sources, as Commissioner Penziger noted or asked about, I believe one of the key sources would be meetings indoors on city property. How many meetings are held every year and how many locations on city property? Most of them city staff, but if the city staff knows, hey, don't bring in a catered lunch for everybody in styrofoam containers, I think that'll go a long way to cutting down on the amount of styrofoam. I call it styrofoam. The sustainability is becoming much more of a priority in Boynton Beach with the great work of Rebecca Harvey and with this commission. And I believe regulating polystyrene is certainly part of that. And it makes sense. There's some very compelling reasons why it makes sense. And one thing I'd like to emphasize is correcting the old factoid about plastic in the environment and polystyrene. We've learned over the years erroneously that polystyrene takes more than 100 years to break down. The truth is that it never goes away. It gets smaller, and most of it, in the water especially, it sinks. In the ocean, where much of it ends up, it gets small enough to be eaten by larval fish. The little tiny, almost microscopic versions of fish and shrimp. And studies have shown they've all got plastic in their stomachs. But then it goes into their, it's so small, it goes into their flesh. And you can extrapolate what happens after that. Fish gets eaten by larger fish and straight into the food chain of humans. That's the danger. And that's the new factoid and a compelling reason why Boynton Beach should regulate polystyrene on all city property. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. And I believe we got another hand raised by Mary Merks. Mary, you're currently self-muted.
Hi, everyone. Good evening, Mayor Grant and city commissioners. Thank you so much for allowing us to speak at your meeting. I would love to commend Rebecca on a wonderful job she did. I am a resident of West Palm Beach, but a former resident of Boynton Beach. And I'm speaking tonight because air and water have no boundaries and nor does floating styrofoam. It quickly becomes airborne and gets everywhere. Plastics, they clog our storm drains, exacerbate localized flooding, increase pathogen-borne disease and increase property damage, which results in higher insurance costs. Plastic waste requires constant cleanup and non-recycled plastics add to solid waste management loads, again resulting in higher costs for governments and taxpayers. We know that microplastics threaten human health and safety, particularly in children. But I want to commend you for the foresight you're showing in addressing this issue. And I want you to know that your constituents appreciate it. A survey conducted by FAU in April 2020 shows that 68% of Floridians are concerned about environmental health and access to clean water, while only 28% said that state, county and city governments were doing enough to address it. I'd also like to point out that consumers aren't driving the demand for polystyrene food packaging products. They're simply not being given a choice. Many cities, states, counties and entire nations have passed plastic reduction policies with incredibly successful results. Eco-friendly products have become more readily available, making it easier for business owners to switch to plastic-free alternatives. And many socially responsible business owners, many in a lot of our coastal cities here in Palm Beach County, have already done so. We know that by reducing the proliferation of single-use plastics, we can reduce real threats to our health, property, economy and future quality of life. We are a tourist-based society here in South Florida. And these plastics threaten our tourism-dependent jobs and economy, particularly our fishing and scuba industries. So thank you so much for your time and your attention to this matter. Again, I'm very heartened to see that you're taking such proactive measures on the topic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Our next speaker is now Catherine Uden.
Hi, I just wanted to address some of the concerns that were raised as far as banning things on city property. Yes, it becomes a little bit more tricky with enforcement as opposed to a complete ban. But of course, we know in the state of Florida, we've been preempted from certain things. So sometimes the city property is all that we can do. But really, you know, I'm a mom and I worry that, you know, our next generations are going to wonder why we didn't do something sooner. Like Mary just stated, there are entire nations that are banning these products and have already banned them. So really, we're kind of falling behind the mark and Florida should kind of be the leader, considering we're surrounded by water and our tourism and our beaches are so important to us and our coral reefs and our ocean life. So, you know, really, the plastic pollution crisis is getting too great for voluntary actions alone. And, you know, even if enforcement is tricky, ordinances like this bring about education and awareness. And it really does encourage people to change their habits and for businesses to change. I'm happy to, like Jamie said, offer to volunteer to do education in the city and work with you on that. The great thing about these ordinances in some of the cities where they've passed, and actually 27 cities or municipalities in Florida have passed straw ordinances, 19 other municipalities have passed some sort of other plastics or foam ordinances. So, you know, these contracts that this is going to apply to, this can apply to temporary vendors, large events, city meetings, you know, pavilion, if you rent pavilions in the city, the contracts can contain it. So it will create some sort of a reduction, even if it's not, you know, like other states where they're allowed to ban it completely. There will be a reduction and every reduction is important. Every little bit that we can reduce is important. And this will send a message to Tallahassee that our municipal, our local governments care about this issue. So I encourage you to do this, and I really appreciate the city working on this, a very important issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. So is there anyone else who would like to speak online? Not seeing any. The main thing that I want to focus on is that I was driving on 95 and there was a truck just spewing the polystyrene and plastic bags because it was a windy day and it wasn't tamped down. And it's just, it's sad that we have to come to this. The one concern that I have is what happens if a city employee gets a polystyrene cup and then brings it into City Hall? What are, you know, are we going to require all of the employees to make the pledge or put a sustainability deposit if they're bringing in outside food as well? Rebecca, I guess it would be the question.
Yes, Mayor, yeah, I think, again, we have the educational period. So we're educating staff just as we're educating everyone else. And during that time, in fact, one of the first things we'll do, where's my timeline? I think it's in there, is to develop an internal policy as well. So it's a policy for our own gatherings and our own functions with staff. So what happens, I guess I would have to defer to my higher-ups on what happens if even after all the education, someone violates that? Is it department by department, you know, or does it just continue to be educational? That's a discussion we can have.
Okay, yeah, you know, for me, it's, I did go to some Boynton Beach businesses that do have the polystyrene. And so, you know, there is a difference in the price in regards to the biodegradable and disposable clam shells. Because they're both disposable, but one's unlikely to harm the environment where the other one is. And so that's kind of where we, as a collective of the commission who represents the city, saying, hey, telling our businesses, we don't want to see you selling the polystyrene anymore because it's not going to be welcome as our catering events at City Hall. And so I think that's, it's going to be the message that it's not just on city property, we don't want to see polystyrene, it's within the city limits that we don't want to see polystyrene. And so I'm glad the city commission is making this. And the only thing that I can think of to help alleviate some of the costs is hopefully working with the local biodegradable manufacturer of these products, TELUS, and to see if we can use our purchasing power to help the community move from the polystyrene to biodegradable materials. And that can be something that, you know, we offer our go-green businesses, the ability to hopefully use our power to get a discount or, you know, work with another, you know, Restaurant Depot or GFS, see what we can do to help businesses buy these products at a comparable rate to the cheap plastic. And I do see another question, yeah. And I do see another question, yeah. And a comment from Catherine Uden saying that employees should not be using polystyrene foam and it's also bad for human health. So Rebecca, do you have direction of where we want the ordinance to be?
We do, yes. And, and thanks to Catherine and others. We already have a draft and I can bring that forward as soon as you all tell me to. Next commission meeting, I'd be ready.
All right, wonderful. I'd like to see that. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item 9D, pod sites, points of distribution. Vice Mayor, you said you want to draft a letter to the Department of Health of the, in Tallahassee about working with the nonprofit organizations to help distribute vaccines. Because we, you know, it's something that we want to do for our residents within the city. You know, I think the, the aspect is that the city has its own facilities to do that. And I believe that we already wrote the letter to Palm Beach and Health Department. And it went to Tallahassee as well. I have no problem writing a letter of any nonprofit or association that wants to work with the city to, to move forward. And that, because the, the issue that you have is that when you're dealing with certain associations, it's limited to that association. We have a lot of 55 and older. And that's why we want to make sure that it is open to all of our residents.
Absolutely. So Mayor, if I may just preface my comments. So this all started because, actually it was just yesterday. I was watching the press conference that our governor gave. And, and even before then, we had heard that he had chosen, again, it's a process, I don't fully understand, it's not quite clear, but he had chosen certain churches to become pod sites. And then yesterday, I heard in his press conference that he is going to continue working with churches to become pod sites. It is something that he favors and is going to continue. So yes, we have the facilities, we, we've had our trial run, as you're aware. And so I figured if we were to partner with a church, could we increase our chances of perhaps becoming a pod site and be allocated some vaccines? And so that's really my intention here. I just want to increase our chances. And if working with the church is what does it, then maybe we should give it a try. And, you know, and I mentioned Christ Fellowship earlier, not to, not to suggest that that's the only partner I'm interested in working with. But I mentioned them because of our previous history with them, with the few food distributions. I think that's a really strong argument. If we can do food distributions in one day of like 10,000 people at one point, clearly we, we have evidence, we have practice, these large-scale events. We've also had that recently with our fire department, with our small distribution, the vaccines. And I also happen to have found out that Christ Fellowship up in Port St. Lucie has their own vaccine distribution. So you combine that with our history, you combine that with the fact that clearly they have some sort of relationship with the governor and his staff. And so I see this as us potentially, if it is the will of this commission, to sign onto a joint letter to the governor's office, to Jared Moskowitz, the Director of Emergency Management at the state, that with these partnerships and with the experiences we have with our ideal geographical location being more, more or less the middle of the county, with our high senior populations, you know, and you combine that with our high minority populations. I think these are all very good arguments. And if we were to partner with a known entity that is also already doing a vaccine distribution up in Port St. Lucie, hey, at most, we've spent some time writing a letter, you know, but at best, we may, we may up our chances and we may, we may become a pod site. And so from my standpoint, I would like to give that a shot. Because right now, I want to do everything we can for seniors and everyone else. So I see very little cost and lots of potential gain.
So I'd like to say that you make a motion to approve the city manager to sign a letter with any nonprofit organization, whether it's church, synagogue, mosque, or, or other type of charity to get, become a point of distribution site.
All right. So do I need to restate the whole motion or just say?
So moved, I think, unless the city manager has any questions.
No.
I, I do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So when we say that the city will partner with any nonprofit to become a distribution site, who, who would be? I, I guess, I'm confused on who is going to actually do the vaccinations? Is, are we thinking it's going to be our fire department personnel or are we going to? I, I don't know what that relationship looks like. So I'd be careful to open it up to just any and all nonprofits because they'll all be knocking our door down to ask us to support that and we won't be able to do that. So I.
Lori, that's a good point. And if I may, Mayor, chime in and respond. So Lori, I could not tell you how it's working in other instances where there's a partnership with a church. Like I mentioned before, there's still a lot of details that are shrouded behind the scenes. But I do know, and I am not just opening this to any group, I mean, that was the mayor's suggestion, but I am specifically offering, maybe offering is not the right word, but I'm specifically mentioning Christ Fellowship because of prior experience and the fact that they are already doing it up in Port St. Lucie.
You know how they're doing it?
No, I don't fully. But I have spoken to Pastor Bob Bender and he's told me a little bit about it. And he's in the process of getting more information. And he has already clearly indicated to me that he is open to joining onto a, a group letter.
So what I'll say is that let's put this on for next agenda, next meeting, to approve any sort of letter that we may, letter of intent from Christ Fellowship to partner with them. So that way we can get understanding what they're requesting of us, rather than an open-ended partnership.
It's not, it's, I wouldn't say it's open-ended, Mayor, I mean.
But you said you didn't know how it works.
No, I, I don't think too many people do. So if you would, if you could specify what kind of information, so I can have that prepared, I will get as much as I can.
So the, it's the, all the information that we would need to be, for them to become a point of distribution site and what resources they would want from the city of Boynton Beach.
Okay. My.
Commissioner Hay.
I, it, it, to my knowledge, and I, I don't know all the, the ins and outs, just like Vice Mayor is stating, but I do know that St. John has been selected as a point of distribution. I fill out an online form for this coming Friday and just waiting for a time right now. But I heard also that the state is taking over everything as far as administering the shot and, and, and everything. St. John people are not really involved except for the, the facility and the location. So what I can do and what I would ask Lori to, you know, also, we, we look into what's really going on here as far as the details of this, because I, I filled out, this is my second one. I filled out one for down in Delray. And now I heard about this one at St. John. So I got the website, went on and, that was actually a form. I think it was the state and I filled it out and they acknowledged to me and now I'm waiting for a time. So I don't know much more than that, Lori, but we can look into it and maybe send an email, not having to wait till our next meeting to share the information. Maybe you might want to send it out and an, and an email to all of us because it's, 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 it's here, it's happening right now. So I don't know if you have any further information on that, Lori.
Yeah, I, I've reached out to a county administrator, Baker. I anticipated a call from her, but I know today is her county commission meeting as well. So we have not connected. I do understand, all I've, all I understand is something is there's supposed to be a distribution this Friday. Because we wanted to, you know, help cross-market it and get it out. It, I know the distribution should not be limited to just the church or any one specific community. It needs to be open to everybody. So what we can do to help there, we will certainly help. I don't know what traffic will be, that we're a little concerned about that. So I'll touch base with the county administrator and see what she can fill us in on so we can be potentially assistance on Friday.
Okay.
So, but I, I'd like to, to give the city manager authority to do whatever we can to any pod site that is in the city of Boynton Beach.
Yep. I agree.
All right.
Yeah.
So if, you know, at next meeting, we'll hear from Christ Fellowship what they would exactly request. And then we'll see how, what happened with St. John's. The issue is, is that this is a changing timeline of everything that's going on right now. And it's going to get even more complicated in the future if we don't really have a plan of action. Because right now, we're just going for the population 65 and older.
Absolutely.
What happens when we deal with the population between, you know, that is younger?
Right.
So, you know, it's, it's the, the point that I have is that we need to make sure that we're not in a rush trying to trample over people to get all this stuff done. Because we understand it's going to take, you know, you know, a couple more months for everyone to be vaccinated. So let's work with whoever and whenever we can.
Mayor, you know, obviously I, I don't want to rush it to the, I think their phrase he uses, so people can get trampled over. I'm, I'm just concerned about the time. We know how long things take. And so, you know, we just heard Commissioner Hay say that the state does all the work. I don't know what more information you need to be okay with a joint letter. And, you know, I, I can wait if that's, you know, if that's your desire. I, but I would prefer not to wait because sending a letter, we may not get a response three months down the road. And so I just don't want to prolong this. We can always figure out the details later. And as from what I've heard from Commissioner Hay say, the state does it all. So in my standpoint, I just want to get the letter out there. Let them know that we are willing to do this, that we have experience doing this. And we're ready to go. All right.
And Mayor, if I may, you know, I don't think you need to wait till the next meeting. I think we can certainly gather as much information as we can. And I, I, I think I'm safe in saying the, the commission overall wants to do anything we can to help get this vaccine into our community, not, not spending millions, but I mean, doing, making effort. So let me try to pace down some details. Vice Mayor can work on the church. We're going to, and I can email this and communicate with you individually and even via email. And if we get to the point of having enough for a letter, I'll email it out to you because literally a consensus or, I don't think it needs to be a formal vote. I think we're okay to communicate via email, if, if we don't want to wait that long, just in case something's an opportunity.
Yeah. I, I think the direction that the commission gave you is whatever you feel is the best course of action.
Okay.
With any sort of.
Soon as I know, gotcha. And I'll certainly keep you informed as soon as I.
Vice Mayor, just.
Thank you, Mayor.
For giving the city manager authority to do what he feels is the best thing.
That will work, thank you.
Took a long time to figure that out. All right, our next item is the new business, the proposed resolution 21-021, proven authorize the mayor to sign the interlocal agreement and purchase and sale agreement for the Historic Women's Club of Boynton Beach. Motion to approve.
Okay.
All right. Do we want to hear what we're doing? The only comments that I have is that, you know, the, the surfing museum is, is a great attraction that I would like the, the city to work with in order to help facilitate the, the use and management of the building. I spoke with Parks and Rec staff member Diane, Diane Valentini, and she's excited about having that under her purview. I know there's going to be some work involved with the commission approving the, the rental rates and how we plan on utilizing that facility. But I understand it's, it's extremely exciting to have a public Addison Meisner building within the city limits of Boynton Beach. And so I'm all in favor. And my main thing that I remember attending a historical club, historical society meeting there. And they said, one of the best ways to keep it healthy is to make sure that it is used regularly. And so that's what, hopefully having a kind of a semi-permanent tenant there will provide for that. Is there a presentation?
I think Catherine, I don't, Catherine, or John, can you unmute her?
Hi, I'm here. Catherine Montz, Assistant City Manager. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. We don't have a presentation prepared, but basically the whole, the proposed resolution is to approve the interlocal and purchase and sale to transfer ownership to the city from the CRA. And if the, if it's approved, the ILA covers three years of operating and maintenance costs that will be covered by the CRA in an amount of up to $200,000 a year for a total of $750,000 over three years for maintenance and renovation costs.
And I, I know we've, we've definitely, Diane has worked with Mr. Warkey on programming and having the, the museum have some presence in the women's club. I, I don't, we're going, our recreation staff or the staff we end up bringing on through the interlocal will be managing the facility and on operations and so forth, as I understand it. But certainly as from a program perspective, to enjoy their, enjoy their exhibits and their presence.
Thank you. Is there anyone who, from the public that'd like to weigh in? All right. I'm seeing anybody. Seeing no further discussion from the city commission? All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
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 All those oppose? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Vice Mayor Penzerga and representative from Feeding South Florida will discuss options for coordinating a day of service at their newly built facility in Boynton Beach.
Thank you, Mayor. So I brought forward this suggestion last meeting and it's, it's relatively straightforward. As you know, their community kitchen has been completed and they are now preparing packaging food for many of our residents. And so initially I thought, you know, I could organize an event to bring some of my neighbors out to help package the food. And then it occurred to me, could we have a commission event? And so I just wanted to put that proposal on the table for you to consider if that would be something that we as a group, I think that would send a great message to the city. But we as a group, would we be willing to do something together or perhaps do it separately? So that's essentially my proposal. But I would love to see us doing something like this together. And I do have Leslie on the phone, if Leslie is still present. If Leslie, you could tell us a little bit more about what's related at Feeding South Florida and what we might be able to expect if we were to volunteer or our neighbors to volunteer in your new community kitchen.
Leslie Swab? All right, Leslie, are you ready to speak?
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Commission. Yes, thank you so much. Sarah does apologize, she got called into something else. But yes, so our community kitchen is open. We do have volunteer shifts available Monday through Friday in the morning and the afternoon. So one at 8:30, one at 1:30. We would love to have you guys come in. We are packaging food, like I said, twice a day, five days a week. It's for anything from prepping to packaging. There's some cooking involved, you name it, we're doing it. And it's a gorgeous facility and we do thank you guys for all of the support you've given us. And we'd love to have you come in and volunteer.
Absolutely. And so, you know, my schedule is different week by week. Absolutely. And so, you know, my schedule is different week by week. And so I'll, can I work, coordinate with you to set up a time?
Yes, absolutely.
All right. So let's, so tomorrow afternoon, I'll contact your office and we'll, we'll figure out a time for the, the mayor to come in.
Great. Thank you so much. And we do thank you guys for all of your support for our distributions at Hester. It's, you know, we've really made it work and, and we're, we're happy to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie.
The city employees, we want to, we've been, you know, we put, we put it on pause with COVID, but we've talked to Sari at, at length about having different, have, have our city employees volunteer for a couple hours during the day to go over and do some shifts. So we'll certainly work toward that too, now that we know we can get in.
Yeah, no, I, I think it's, it's sometimes, you know, give you a, a different aspect of working, giving back to others. So no, I'm very happy that I definitely would give a blessings for the city staff to use time to do, to, to work with Feeding South Florida.
Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission? Hearing none, moving on to proposed ordinance 20 dash 003, first reading, approve of revision to city ordinances, section nine dash three C to include photovoltaic systems. May I have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second.
Second.
And so does this include battery generation or what exactly is this?
I believe, Mayor, we are updating our ordinance to match the Florida fire code. I believe Stables is on the call if he needs to elaborate. If you would like him to.
All right. Jim, you're currently self muted.
Hello?
Hello?
Yeah, we're, we're, yeah, we're, we're adopting the fire code as required and the building code is required. I believe the last time it was coming to the commission, we had to change a word that was somehow deleted when they were entering it in. So, and it was dealing with the solar panels. So that's been corrected and it's good to go.
All right. I have a motion second. Any further discussion from the commission? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Penzerga?
Yes.
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Aye.
The vote is five zero.
All right. Excellent. So the things for future agenda items for discussion was the Commissioner Romulus wanted to talk about the CDBG funding to include CRA businesses. And speaking with the director for District four of the Florida Department of Transportation, I want to make sure that we have a resolution for maintenance for State Road five, I-95, because they are doing some projects in Gateway and Boynton Beach Boulevard within the next few years. And we want to make sure that we are putting in our reclaimed water to water those areas. And then the last thing I'd like to put on future agenda is the political signs that are still out there. I know I have some in my neighborhood, not talking about flags, but I want to, you know, authorize this community standards to let the resident and business owners know it's been 30 days since the election. And if the candidate is not currently running for office, that they cannot have their political signs in their yards. And so, you know, I don't know if we need to put that as a future agenda item or if we can just get direction to staff that we're okay with community standards.
Yeah, we're, we're doing that now, Mayor, and I will certainly get an update from Mr. Temple and get that out to you via email. Cause that is something we actively do after the 30 days. If not, we, I believe we may even be picking them up ourselves and putting them, and then we call them and say, hey, come get your sign or it goes in the trash. But I'll confirm that with Mr. Temple.
All right. Thank you so much.
Mayor, I have a quick question. I, I don't want to drag out the meeting, but is, is that in reference to in public right of way and not being appropriate? Or if I like own a house and I had a Trump or a Biden sign and that's just like my house decoration?
If it's a decoration and not a political yard sign in your yard, that is okay. So my neighbors have Trump flags. I'm not asking for community standards to take the Trump flags down. I'm stating that the, any sort of political speech that is in the yard be stated that it is a violation of our city ordinances.
Okay.
They're typically the snipe signs, the small yard signs. They are, community standards can identify what's a political sign, certainly.
Correct. Thank you. All right, John, can I have a closing, please?
Yes, Mayor Grant. As a reminder, a recorded version of this session will be posted to the city of Boynton Beach's YouTube channel. Links to that channel are available on the city of Boynton Beach's website at boynton-beach.org. This concludes today's meeting. On behalf of Mayor Grant and all of our elected officials, the city manager and city staff, thank you for attending today's city of Boynton Beach commission meeting. Be safe and have a great evening.
All right. Thanks so much. Please adjourn.
Good night, everyone.